Start off the meeting, appreciate everybody being online. James Drinkard can't be here tonight, he's the chairman, so you get me. Again, thanks for everybody's participation. We're gonna go ahead and get started and, you know, I would, if y'all don't mind, I'd like to take 10 seconds of silence that we just kinda remember our leaders who are navigating us through this period of time. And so if we just take 10 seconds of silence, starting now. Alright, thank you. And we just need, our leaders need wisdom and support. So anyway, just thankful that we can be here to serve our community. Let's go ahead and stall, call to order. We've got a approval of minutes for the July 9th meeting. I was not here, so I will abstain. Do I have a motion from any of the other?
You can't vote on it if you have to abstain because we need more people for a quorum. So we will have to just postpone those July minutes one more month.
Well, we have Deborah, Renee, Brandon, and Matt.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot Renee joined. Never mind, forgive me.
Hello. I don't think I was here for June. That's my possibly be our issue. I need to look at that, actually.
Should we just wait on that, then?
You said it was July minutes.
Yes, July minutes.
Yeah, we can, I think we can vote on July if we have enough people here.
You do.
But I don't think we can vote on June.
We don't have June, we just have July and August.
Okay, then we're good.
So do we have a motion to approve the minutes for July 9th meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes. Two of us.
Okay.
Do I have a second? Second with Renee. Deborah made the motion. All in favor, Brandon? Yes or no?
Yes.
Renee, yes or no?
Yes.
Deborah, yes or no?
Yes.
And Matt, yes or no?
Yes.
Those have, that's approved. Approval for the minutes for August 6th, 2020. You read through them, do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve the August 6th meeting, as stated.
Okay, Deborah made a motion.
Second.
Matt, you're abstaining, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, but I was here, so, Brandon, what's, what's your pleasure?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
And then yes for me. So the move, approval of the minutes have passed. So we're gonna move on to our petitions and communications. So I wanna remind everybody throughout this, the presentations, if you are not speaking, please put your microphone on mute. And if you do not want us to see you or any activity going on in your house, or wherever you are, please put your video on mute. And when you speak, please speak directly straight towards the microphone on your computer or whatever you're speaking into, as things get muffled if you turn to the side. So our first petition is, Z135-20, Larkspur rezoning to SL and variances. Katie, would you like to take it away?
Certainly, thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners, and everybody in the room and everybody at home. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. So as you said, this is Casey 13520 Larkspur. Next slide, please. It's in Ward 3. The applicant is Woodstock Healthy Living LLC. The owner is also Woodstock Healthy Living LLC. And it's a collection of five parcels. Next slide, please, I'll show you what those are. So these are the parcels. It is, let me see here. Outlined and red here, it's currently zoned R1 and GC. And that is because the zoning reverted after the last zoning case we had on this property. So it has been zoned SLC before, but it's got a clean slate from that zoning because we officially reverted it after the two previous zoning cases did not go forward. The parcels are situated between Ansley Forest Neighborhood and Nice Road and the First Baptist Church. And there's a Culvers restaurant planned on the corner, as you may remember from last month. Next slide, please. Alright, so, let's see here. It's proposed for SLC at 18 units per acre. The base density allowed by the Senior Living Ordinance for SLC, and there's also SLA and B, as you may know. SLC, the base density allows 12 units per acre. The proposal is for 174 units total of 55-plus independent living units. It's a community that will have a lot of amenities, but doesn't have a centralized dining room, as far as I know. The applicant can correct me on anything I happen to get wrong here. But the applicant has stated that the property is affordable compared to other offerings in Woodstock. And they specifically mentioned the Holbert project that's just finishing up being built on Highway 92. But they're not offering affordable units as defined by our code in order to secure the density bonus. So that's why they're asking for a variance to allow a density increase here. So the site plan shows 31 cottages. That's, they said that it would be about 15% cottages. And you can see the smaller units attached here, kinda to the left side of the site plan. And then to the right side of the site plan is a building that I believe is three stories. And that would have the remainder of the, around 143 apartments. The request also includes a variance for grading and replanning in the 25-foot zoning buffer, which you can see here surrounding the edges of the property. Next slide, please. So a little bit about the Senior Living Ordinance. It's been a minute since we've had a senior living proposal. The purpose and intent of the ordinance is to provide for detached, attached, and multifamily dwellings. And so that's where the SLA, B, and C comes from. So A is supposed to be detached, and B is attached, C is multifamily, and they all have a different densities. And specifically for dwelling units for those age 55-plus. And the intention is to locate these developments in areas where there are services nearby. Preferably even when people can no longer drive, they should be able to access the nearby services. And so there are location requirements in our ordinance that are supposed to be fulfilled if a property is going to be zoned, one of these senior living zoning districts. Part of the intent is to promote the concept of aging in place. And that includes having a variety of choices, but also a variety of price points. It allows residents to remain in their communities as they age. So we're looking for, you know, all kinds of communities. Active living, assisted living, full care facilities, and independent living facilities, like what's being proposed here. The intent of the ordinance is also to promote pedestrian safety and to provide meaningful open space. Next slide, please. So a little more about the location requirements. As I said before, this property has been zoned SLC twice before. So there are a couple of different ways that you can meet the location requirements by either actually being within a quarter-mile radius of these uses, grocery stores, pharmacies, and/or medical service facilities. Or they can be exempt from this requirement if the uses are provided on-site. And projects are supposed to also maintain the scale and intensity of surrounding uses, which actually, this project, I think, does because of the, it doesn't maintain the same scale and intensity of surrounding uses, but it does have a nice step-down in density from the more intense multifamily unit buildings to the cottages on the edge of the property against the Ansley Forest Neighborhood. But it does not meet the location requirements as far as the exemption and the distances. So in a second, I'll show you the distances. But here are the amenities and accommodations that they are proposing to provide. The one on this list that could meet this, this standard is the general store providing food, beverages, and household items. That was also something that was offered in the 2014 case. They offered a meal plan and a cafeteria with at least one meal a day provided. But they also had a store where they offered fresh food. And back then, when we are going, when we were going through the last case, the former director of the department and I actually visited one of the other senior living projects for that particular applicant and saw their general store and saw that it was, you know, fresh fruit and vegetables and eggs and basics and stuff like that. So if that's part of what they're offering here, then that could meet one of these uses, the grocery store. Let's see. Next slide, please. Alright, so a little more about the location requirements. You know, in my opinion, this, the request should include a variance to the location requirements for SLC. Normally, when there's a distance requirement, like with the alcohol ordinance and some other ordinances we have, we get people to have a survey or actually measure these distances officially. So what you see here on the screen is definitely not official. And, excuse me, one second. What you see on the screen here is not official. It's just a measurement that I did in our GIS software. But it shows that they're pretty far off from being a quarter mile. So the closest, I think, could be the Rite Aid, which is .48 miles. Next slide, please. So our opinion is that, that it doesn't necessarily meet the location requirements unless they can offer more services on-site. As for the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, the future character area here is CBC Community Village Center. It says residential development may be appropriate if it's a multifamily development anchored by substantial retail on the ground floor. But this proposal is not supported by the comprehensive plan because, of course, there's no commercial component. Next slide, please. As far as policy direction, this is another thing we looked at when trying to evaluate whether to recommend approval of the rezoning to SLC here. The council has a multifamily and senior living residential goals policy, which was most recently revised and adopted on October 22nd, 2018. And it does not support the addition of more senior living units. The policy states a goal of a maximum of 5% of the total number of households in Woodstock to be senior living. And this is something that Dakota prepares this report every week and updates the percentages with different housing units that have been built. So the current percentage of 55-plus neighborhoods is 8.4%. Next slide, please. As for the two variances that they've requested, the first one is a variance of 7.603, the buffer section, saying that buffers should be generally natural and undisturbed and free of encroachments. They're proposing grading in the buffer and replanting to supplement whatever they take out from the buffer. So staff did not make a recommendation on this, but nobody voiced opposition. And this is a pretty common request we get. And it's a zoning buffer rather than a stream buffer. So that could, that could be warranted if the rezoning were approved. But when we look at the second variance for the density, they're proposing 18 units per acre with no affordable units or assisted living units to garner the density bonus. Those are the two things that you can get a bonus for. We recommend that they provide 10% affordable units, which would make this variance unnecessary. That's all they need to provide to get the density bonus. So because we don't support an increase in density without some kind of affordability for some of the units, to recommend approval would make the project infeasible if we recommended it just at 12 units per acre, we think. Although we didn't really get a lot of information from the applicant on their, on their pro forma. But this is another reason for the recommendation for denial. Next slide, please. And here's the recommendation. So on August 26th, the DPC voted unanimously to recommend denial of the rezoning and variance requests for the four general reasons I just went over, which are the affordability, location requirements, the senior living policy, and the fourth one, that has just left my brain. But that is our recommendation. Can I answer any questions from the planning commission? And also, I know the applicant is here to present their case, and they have a presentation as well.
Hi, Katie. Thank you. What is, what type of development is Ansley Forest to the west?
It's a single-family detached neighborhood. It's zone PUD, which is Planned Unit Development, which is a zoning we don't have anymore. But it's probably most similar to R2 or R3A.
Okay. And as you said, in the future development, this is
Community Village.
CBC Community Village Center. So understand that part. What, I know every case is different, you can't look into a crystal ball, but like, what type of areas would support senior living? I think I saw urban village, or I think neighborhood, or suburban living, or something like that?
Yeah, so any of the residential districts could probably support it. Also, the urban village or urban core districts could support it, which are in our downtown district. And they would probably be appropriate because of the location, being close to services and other things. Also, the Regional Activity Center, as opposed to the Community Village Center. So we have two activity centers, regional and then Community Village Center. And so the Regional Activity Center is more appropriate for apartments and more intense uses. And Community Village Center, it really doesn't, it doesn't mention residential very much, except for that one case that I mentioned, which would be multifamily with retail on the bottom. So like a mixed-use building.
Okay, 'cause just to the left, this is, is, looks like suburban living, is that correct?
Yes. Yep, and that's that way because of Ansley Forest.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
Right. So, and another thing to say, it could be appropriate to put this in CBC if that were the only factor. But, you know, as I said, staff looked at a bunch of different factors in this case. So it was just a contributing factor. But an important one.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Here Renee's got her hand up.
Go ahead, Renee.
You're muted, though, Renee. Take off your mute, Renee.
Sorry, was this required for public input meeting?
Yes.
Okay, did we get any of that?
Yes, actually, it just occurred to me that I did not include the public input report on the agenda because I was having problems with the agenda software at the last minute. And that's the last document that was sent to me. So I'm sorry I didn't send that to you. But I'm sure Mr. Huff can explain how the public input meeting went. There were several people attended. It was a good Zoom meeting.
Okay, thanks.
I've got a question. When, when we put a requirement regarding affordable units, how do we enforce that?
Well, it's not a requirement. In this case, it's a bonus. And so, so, you know, people can take it or leave it. What they really, you know, I think what our code intends them to do is to plan for a higher density only if they're gonna be able to provide those things that get you the bonus, which is either assisted living or affordability. So it's not a requirement. It's, it's a way to get a bonus incentive.
And then they have to prove that they, that they have made.
Yeah, so as far as how we enforce it, we only have one other development in the city that has this affordability component that it's using. So enforcement might take a little bit of research. But, but, you know, we asked them if they would, you know, if they wanted to do affordability, can they provide us whatever they could do? And they didn't provide us anything. So I didn't really jump in too much how to, how all the details are gonna work out.
Okay, and then on the SLC zoning that was approved in the past, explain again how that was white and green, and?
The, the Senior Living Ordinance actually says that if a project is zoned with one of the Senior Living zoning districts, that if it is not developed in 18 months, it should revert back to the underlying zoning that it was before it was zoned senior living. And so in both cases, the first case was in 2007, and the next one was in 2014. So in both cases, we did a city-initiated rezoning to return the property to its underlying, which in this case is R1 and GC. I think that 2007 case had a slightly different makeup of parcels in it, but they were all zoned back to R1. So, so it, not only is it in the code, but it's actually an action that we took, like an official zoning action.
Got you.
And Katie, do you, do you have any idea if, back on the latest case, 2014, if the, the percentage of senior living was around that 5% or less than? Or do we even have a policy back then, do you know?
We did not have senior living in the policy back then. It was only about multifamily rental. And, and then when we updated the policy in October 2018, we added senior living and, I think just, we added senior living to it with the percentages.
Okay, so that's a change since then. And then also, it looks like the, in 2014-
And a lot has been built since then, also, sorry.
Right, yeah, of course, things have changed. And then looking back to, it also looks like in the previous request, there were, like you said, there were different amenities or more, I guess, more services, essentially, the way you described it.
Right, yeah, so in the previous request in 2014, they did, staff actually recommended denial of the case because of the location requirements, because it didn't meet location requirements. And the applicant was proposing, or saying that it was more like assisted living than independent living because so many services were offered on-site. And staff and planning commission both recommended denial, but the council recommended approval, or not recommended. They voted to approve the case.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and also, that's after, after that case was approved is when we put the exemption in the code to allow the location requirements, if they're actually provided on-site, if all of those things are provided on-site. We added that to the code to, you know, because that's the way the council voted. And so, you know, we figured it would be okay going forward. But there, this proposal's offering different services.
And I guess lastly, I, well, I'm not gonna ask the question, nevermind. Talk to you offline about it. It's an overall picture. In light of today's environment of services and grocery shopping and such, we can talk about later. Any, any other questions? Matt, do you have anything? Deborah?
No.
No, I have no questions.
Alright, well, the applicant is here. I'm sure they are ready to present.
Okay, let's hear from the applicant.
And Parks, you're gonna have to unmute yourself, I think, from, at the podium there.
Ah, is that it?
Yes.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Awkward presenting to y'all this way, with y'all, y'all sitting up here. But I appreciate y'all being virtually here. And I'm, I know, I've got my client on the line and several of their folks. I'm gonna start out with presentation and handoff to them to kinda fill in some of the details about who they are and what they're proposing. As always, this is kinda did a great job outlining the case and putting it together and explaining it to you. But I'm gonna walk through my presentation if I can get to that slide.
Just gotta say, next slide.
Next slide. If I go to the next slide, that's a representative example of the architecture. And the property is at the intersection of Nice Road and Highway 92. There's a lot of things that are very important about the location. Not, most importantly is the fact you got the church right across the road. And that is a very significant factor. And I know anecdotal evidence sometimes can be misleading, but we had a lot of good public participation with this case and, and a lot of phone calls. And an example was someone who called from Evelyn Forest, Evelyn Farms, excuse me, and wanted to know what the project was. And when I explained it, what it was, the comment was, "I know a lot of folks that are older, that go to that church, who have, would like to live there." And I think, and I know, I know that that is my client sentiment, that their market is going to be a lot of folks who go to that church. And this property, as was noted before, was zoned to the senior living category before. It's very important to understand when you have policies in place that there are many different types of senior housing. And this product is unique and fits into what you already have very well and fills a need that is not being met by the current, current market. What the previous proposal was, was all one large, large building. And this is a different layout. And it has 88 single-family, or single-bedroom units, another 88 two-bedroom units, and then 31 cottages with actual garage space parking in those units. So that is something that is very significant. We also have an incredible amount of amenity space. And that ties into this affordability. And I wanna really crack down and focus in on that affordability part. And that our rents are what I would say is more affordable to the average folks. And again, anecdotal evidence. Had a conversation with the city manager about someone whose property was acquired for a road project. And it was an elderly woman, and she needed a place to live after a property being acquired. And it was, well, this is the type of product that serves that need. Go on the next slide. Again, this gives you the location of the property. It is on the edge, and I think it's very important to note, this is a transitional property. So it transitions from the commercial and the intensity of the commercial to the residential that surrounds us. The Ansley Forest Neighborhood, they're here in the audience, and we've had some good dialogue with them. We want to be a good neighbor to them. We've made promises to them about fencing and landscaping, that we will have fencing and landscaping that will create an attractive barrier. And they have existing drainage problem that we can help alleviate with the way our development will happen. And most importantly, I think, is we create the transition. You just approved the Culvers fast-food restaurant. That Culvers will actually share access with us off of Highway 92. So you gotta think, what, if it's not our use, what other use would share an access with Culvers? And so I think that we create that step-down. And we have designed our project, again, if I go to the next slide. Go to the next slide. Next slide. We've designed our project so that the, on the perimeter and the edges are the cottages with the garages. And closer to Nice Road is the main building. We have significant services. You can see pool and courtyard, a lot of open space. And so we've designed it so we, we create the transition from the retail at the corner through our property. And talk about the services provided. And Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned that, you know, in today's environment, it's a little different than the previous environment. And that, you know, so much is available via delivery through Uber Eats and Uber-type services so that groceries are often delivered. And also, it is important to note that you're gonna have the Culvers. And you mentioned, if you were at the hearing for the Culvers, they talked about how they cater to sit-down eating and cater to that type of environment. So that's an eating opportunity right there. Also, for those who've been around for a little while will remember that Lidl is zoned. They actually, I do know, have permits to build Catty Corner from this site on the opposite south side of 92 at the intersection of Nice Road. That they do have permits and they've acquired the property. When that gets built, obviously, is a question. But it does raise the issue about, you know, proximity. How important is it? You could be close to a drugstore that closes, that, you know, when you go through zoning, and then it could close the next day. And so, right now, this site is at the civilized intersection of two major roads. It has a lot of activity around it that would serve the senior population. If I go to the next slide. The current zoning is R1, but as I said, as the staff said, this is in the transition area. And so it transitions from the retail at the corner. And that we, what we're going to be doing is creating a community that will serve a specific population. And we did a full study showing the need of this that was done for our lenders to make sure that we had it. And I was going through those numbers earlier. The pop percentage of 65 and older is 13% today. And in three years, it's supposed to rise to 16%. That is talking, that is not, I mean, that is, quite frankly, just because the population here is aging. I am a huge advocate, and y'all have heard me talk about this in other matters. And, you know, we have a responsibility to provide appropriate housing for seniors. All my grandparents lived in three-bedroom, two-bath ranch homes. It was easier to age in place in a ranch home. Pretty much, the housing since the 70s is multi-story. And it is not as easy to age in place in that type of environment. So if you look around and you draw a radius around our property, you know the half-acre, quarter-acre lot subdivisions that are all around there. Most of those homes are, you know, multi-story. And you have a population that's aging. You may have, quite frankly, a good number of widows and widowers. And they can't or do not have the ability to maintain their property or to handle stairs. That's one reason why I think this is thought, should be thought of very differently than other types of senior housing. We're, we're serving the surrounding area and will be pulling people that live in the community now out of housing that does not, no longer meets their needs. And one of the great things about that is that then frees up a home that was designed for single-family and younger families to be backfilled in with younger families. So as, as we cycle through. This is, you know, all rental product so that the full tax basis goes to the city. And that's very important to understand, too. If I go to the next slide. And I don't, Noah, do you wanna take over at this slide?
Hello, everybody, can you hear me? Okay, thank you, Katie. I can see you, Katie. My name is Noah Drew, I'm the owner of Imprint Property Group. And I'll explain this slide. But more importantly, I wanna talk a little bit about the history of how we developed the Larkspur brand. My family's typically built apartments. And about 12 years ago now, we ventured into senior housing. Since then, we have stopped buying or developing any apartments. It's too many people doing it. And it, it really doesn't give back, people are creating these really small units and trying to design, we call it better mousetrap, creating efficiency. And just the fundamentals behind it and the, the, the need and, and the passion for creating, uh, you know, a residential neighborhood or community is less effective. So we've stopped that business and then we moved to senior housing. And in our search of senior housing, we bought or developed independent living, assisted living and memory care. These are all types of communities that you know about. Uh, you mentioned that you talk about assisted living in your, in your city ordinances. Um, but, what we found is that that original design and look and feel and price point, um, continues to, to move farther and farther away from the resident. Care costs continue to increase, construction costs continue to increase to a point that if residents don't either have a sizable savings or help from their family, they're alone and they're unable to afford it. And when I say they're unable to afford it, uh, all those programs, cares and nurses within those communities, um, i- it doesn't work. And those projects become not financeable, so they're either not built or those residents are still stuck in their, in their homes unless they sell. That led us to a brand called Larkspur and our whole motto behind Larkspur is the new, it's the future of senior housing. And there's a wave coming across the country. This product type is really, I'd say, fully designed the last ten years and it's really create, created this new, uh, this new design and new operational pro forma that allows you to pass all the savings back to residents. And what I mean by that is, we try to serve for the middle income. So we mentioned the property Holbrook that you can see above. I don't like to name competitors, however, this is indirectly from a slide from our market study, which it names. And the rents start there at five, well, their average rents are five thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars. That's a lot of money that somebody needs to make or have in savings to afford that. Our whole program is to create a product and to run it efficiently, so residents never leave. They love it so much that they don't leave that you can keep their rents relatively low compared to competitor properties. And then they don't have to be in homes and, and suffer home isolation. So there's a rule in all rentals and anybody here that's rented apartments in the past or senior housing in the past for their loved ones. Uh, it's a three-to-one ratio, it's what your income is to your rent. And this, uh, this is from a recent study from JLL and this shows that the PMA, you know, four miles around the, the property area. The average between forty-five and seventy-five-year-olds, the average medium income is eighty-two thousand dollars. So that shows that if you do the three-to-one ratio, their monthly income perceived by this is six thousand eight hundred dollars. We fit squarely, our price point fits squarely that they can afford this in the three-to-one ratio. You have to have a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars a year to qualify for Holbrook. Now, they may make exceptions, but that is a typical ratio. So our goal, again, when you talk about affordability, affordability always sounds nice, but there's rules that apply there. Usually you get state, federal or local assistance in order to finance the project. Because what I mean financed the project, when you go to a bank, they need to make sure that these, that this pro forma makes sense and they can give you the loan to do the construction, the project. It, it, it's simple, but those are the metrics that they have to hold true to. So if you do affordable, you get subsidies, which is great. When it serves, um, an area that has to, uh, has to reflect and make fifty percent of an AMI test. So it only serves a subset, who's often lost in senior housing is the middle segment. And that's our whole brand, it's providing housing for the middle segment, um, for, for the income test. And another thing about, uh, the AMI test is once people are in, yeah, and you can go verify this yourselves and go see the other communities that have the affordable component. Once people are in, they are, these programs, they offer very little programs and run it with very little staff. Because there's stipulations on what rent growth and what expenses you can pass through. So it's not always that attractive, it may be attractive initially, but for the residents, they're not really getting many services. Our whole goal is to provide the most bang for the buck for the most affordable price point possible with allowing us to build the project. And that's how we even came up with the number hundred, with between a hundred and, and seventy and a hundred and eighty units, that's our program. So we've, this is gonna be our fifth project, if you'd be, if you'd, you glad, if you would accept it, this would be our fifth, uh, Larkspur. We manage it in-house, we have a customs program activities director that develops a custom pro, uh, programs menu at each community, at each location that is different. That ties to your local tastes and attributes of that community. Uh, so again, going back to the affordable side, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to squint here, but the rents would have to be seven hundred and thirty-one, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. So if we ever did, and you should look at this for other projects, if we ever did add that affordability component, we have to then charge additional rent to the other people that are not part of that affordability component. We just have to, in order to show the numbers, in order to get the bank to, to give a construction loan, simple as that. And that's not right to do, because then that will push the, the middle income seg- segment here, that vast majority of people reflected in this four-mile, uh, radius. Uh, that will push them out of that three-to-one ratio. Next slide, please. All right, this, this is again from our market studies, this just talks about, uh, potential renters. Um, so we talked about, you know, who moves into our community. Uh, what we've come to realize is that, again, this is fairly new, people move into your community because they want to escape, uh, social isolation. During COVID, during the onset of COVID, we've had the most leases of any other segment and any other asset class we own. In active adult, in our other Larkspur communities. And the number one reason why is home isolation has been detrimental to people. Uh, so when people move in, um, we do, during COVID, we have, we have a program and a protocol in place where we quarantine them for fourteen days. But then they join in through social isolation, I mean, sorry, uh, separation, six-foot separation as well as masks. Um, we do create that sense of community and that's kept our communities full. And to date, and not going way, but to date, we have had not one case of COVID in any one of our senior communities across the country. And that's due to strict protocols, but we still allow our residents to do great activities. What are great activities that we can do during COVID? One is instead of doing bands in local, uh, events inside, we take them outside, we bring bands and they do it in the parking lot or by the pool area. We still have water aerobics and then we limit the number of people in different activities rooms, so they can still have that, uh, that separation. And Katie, to, to your point about, uh, programs, we do have the Larkspur general store. Our residents do leave, they are active, but they do do most of their shopping similar to a seven-eleven at our store. It does provide food, but to be clear, we provide breakfast at every one of our communities. So at this community, we'd have breakfast seven days a week without fail and coffee. And then we also do wine and cheese events. And then we also have a display kitchen in the middle. And on Wednesdays, we call them wines on Wednesdays, and on Fridays, we bring in a professional chef. This professional chef is local, usually a local restaurant or at a college, depends on who we want. They come in and they provide their favorite hors d'oeuvres. We have cameras on their hands, it's right in the middle of, of, of the community area. And they're cooking and our residents have wine, cheese, social events while they're getting hors d'oeuvres. And it's just a sense, it's, it's just a way to, it's another little way to build this community, this sense of community and how it works for us as an owner. Why would we offer all these programs for us as owners, so keep our rents less? With this program, our residents don't leave. And when residents don't leave your community, you don't have to increase the rates. You, you don't ever have to turn those units, so it costs us a thousand dollars when somebody leaves to fix the unit or two thousand dollars to repaint it, clean it. We don't have to do that in this case, because they stay, so, and then the unit's not offline, so then we don't have to keep pushing rates. So our goal again is to provide the most amenities possible, all the activities, so it's like a club med for, for our, for our residents. They're always busy and we keep our price point, in this case, under half of what are, of our new competitor, and this is for a brand-new community. Oh, and then lastly, in terms of taxes, uh, I understand that there's, there's an exemption for people that are over the age of fifty-five owning property, they don't pay, uh, city Woodstock tax. It's a great program and I applaud that. However, this program just brings people to our home, to our community, and then that really frees up their homes to start our families, that can, they pay tax and we can kind of pass that cycle. Um, one, one last thing about our affordability component, uh, we offer discounts to retired teachers, uh, public service workers and veterans across the board at every one of our communities, and that's for life of the lease. Our next slide, please. All right, so the, the whole idea is why should Woodstock choose Larkspur? Again, this happens at all of our communities, but in terms of what we do is we, we do have, uh, an incredible amount of services and programs. All of our amenity space, which is about eighteen thousand square feet of amenity space, all the, all that space is utilized by different, uh, programs. So if we just scroll down here, you'll see local restaurants, we, we, uh, we do bring in the, the, the chefs, like I mentioned. We also order food from local restaurants to be delivered to our, our residents. So what makes this really affordable, this model, is that residents can either cook in their own units. And when I say cook in their own units, they have full kitchens, GE appliances, a kitchen island made of quartz, all the bells and whistles. Or they can get together with their friends. And what we do as an owner and what our management team does is we go along to local restaurants, all the local restaurants, Korean, Japanese, um, Italian, et cetera. And we develop relationships, we get, uh, we get together and get a seven to ten dollar prefix menu that changes monthly, what it works. And then we give our residents that option, so they come to us and they say to the, to our concierge, we have a full-time concierge, seven days a week in our community. Come to our concierge and say, hey, this group, we want Italian, we want Korean, we want Japanese. We order all the food and then we include it on their rent, but they don't do anything and then the local restaurants benefit. Additionally, gym trainers, we have, uh, uh, gym classes throughout the day. We don't just have the gym, but we have a, a group fitness center that has, you know, the, the plankwood flooring, it looks just like a nice yoga studio and has views of the pool. And then on top of it, we have a lap pool and we do water aerobics multiple times a day with the water aerobics trainers as well. So we try to utilize as many of the, actually not just as many, we try to, all of our programs are taught by, in art, et cetera, are taught by people that live within, uh, the local area. Um, next, uh, slide, please. This is a list of our amenities. Um, this is a real list, these are things that we include in each one of our communities, they are incredible. There's something that people do in construction. Uh, your goal is to get the most net rentable square footage, so the most dollar per square foot you can make, uh, for, for, for wasted space. So for example, an office building, you have a common area, you walk in, you have your elevators, that's all wasted space. And then you get the units that make money. What we do is our ratio significantly higher than anything you've probably ever seen, but it works for us, because people don't leave. And if people don't leave, we don't have to turn those units. So we try to offer all this space and our whole idea is, if we can make this the most attractive space possible for eighteen thousand square feet for only a hundred and seventy-four units, that's like, that's like four times bigger than any of these multifamily communities and they probably have two hundred and fifty to three hundred units. The reason why we can do that is because people don't leave and then they'll, they'll, they'll move in much quicker. So it's really entices them to join that sense of community. And going through this list, um, I mean, you guys can take your time to go through, but all these programs are offered daily. In terms of COVID, we did have to, uh, uh, make some modifications, but then we started loosening up those restrictions and bringing people back. And we haven't lost anybody, we've actually increased our occupancy significantly at all of our communities during COVID, when most people haven't, and we have no cases of COVID. Our next slide, please. All right, these are real testimonials, you can Google Larkspur at Twin Creeks, that's one property, Larkspur at Twin Creeks in Allen, Texas. And these are real testimonials, they're not fabricated from our residents and these are videos of them. Um, these are fairly old, two thousand nineteen, so you can go see if there's fresh ones on there, but we always have five stars. What's different about renting to a twenty-year-old or somebody that's really sick in some of our other communities, uh, that have, um, is that these residents are, uh, they're very opinionated. And I mean that the most respectful way. If you do anything that does not serve the need of the community and they really believe it is their community and it truly is, if you don't do that, they will let you know. So you have to be on top of this, you have to manage it, and that's really what a family can do versus an institution. And I would say that's our biggest touch point, is we are a family and, you know, my family goes and sees our residents. So one last thing about this slide is we just implemented a new policy. Every one of our team members at the corporate level is required to spend a day at our communities, whether in the commercial kitchen, whether in, uh, whether in housekeeping and spend a day in the life of the people that really make these communities work. So that's our, our program that's rolling out at the end of twenty twenty. Next slide, please. All right, this is interior finish for our shop that's just opening up in Houston right now, that's quartz town countertop, that's more of a contemporary progressive feel. This is how the community looks, these rents start seventeen hundred dollars. Um, our next slide, please. This is our cottage from our, from our third deal, which is in New Braunfels and, and these are the cottages. That, that walkway is pretty neat, that connects the pool area and the main building and courtyard to the cottages. We try to create that neighborhood component, it is critical to make these properties work, next step. These are, yo, uh, real-time live shots, so this is, you know, post-COVID, hence, hence with the face mask. Uh, and then this is during Christmas, um, we, we are good about making sure that people don't have any fire hazards on the deck, but, you know, we do work with them. Next step. Okay, this is our Halloween party, as you can tell, uh, we throw parties all the time. Um, you'll probably twice a month, it just depends, um, but each holiday will definitely have a party. And, uh, residents are happy and, uh, we even, we even threw a classic car auto show at our property and that was really neat. Our, our residents, uh, put on hats like they're at the Kentucky Derby and, uh, it really created a sense of community, next step. Okay, here's a band, so we've, so this is a bowling alley, this is one of our activities, we have a bus. When I say we have a bus, most senior housing companies have a, uh, uh, a, a short bus that has a senior housing logo. We don't do that, we get a, a, a black Mercedes Sprinter van, like you're going wine tasting, it has a little Larkspur logo, it does not say senior housing. Our residents are not seniors, they're active, it's basically a sorority and a fraternity living again, uh, in their later years and they love it. And then this is, uh, one of our, uh, bands outside, uh, next step. Uh, this is our Thanksgiving, again, we have a diverse community, um, and we pride ourselves in that. Uh, we found that some of our competitors do not have diverse communities or, not that they mean to, but they just don't. And, uh, that has always been one of, uh, our best-selling qualities. And, uh, again, we attract everybody and at our price point, we're able to do so, next step. And this is, these are our veterans, they're proud, we have a veterans wall in each one of our communities. Um, we take them very seriously and we provide a twenty percent discount, uh, for life. And, uh, frankly, that's probably not enough, but, uh, it's, it's all we could do to still make the economics work at this point. But, um, we're pleased to be, support them in any way possible. And, and please look forward, so even though we don't have a dining room, look at these meals being served, these are on our dime, we do not charge the residents. So we are always serving food, next step. That's it, and I thank you so much for listening to me and hopefully I didn't rant too long.
Do we have, um, any, any questions for the applicant? Any, I, I've got one if nobody else does. Do you, uh, Noah, do you guys charge an entrance fee?
That's a great question, so we do, our entrance fee is a thousand dollars, that's it. And we waive it, um, we usually waive it for our first residents, but that, that really helps offset some of our programs. Our act, our current activities budget, uh, for paying instructors, your local instructors, food, items like that, not food for, but food associated to a program, bands, et cetera, costs is between eighty-five and one hundred thousand dollars per year.
And so you said the food, you're providing food for, you're not charging them for that food?
Absolutely not, we do not charge them, that's all-inclusive in the rent.
Okay. Gotcha, anybody else have any questions?
I do. Renee. Um, so this is basically independent senior living.
Correct, but without the three meals a day, we, so in, independent senior living has a commercial kitchen and then they have sit-down and their rent is usually between thirty-five hundred and forty, forty-five hundred dollars. Holbrook, uh, i- is north that, but it's a brand-new community.
Right, um, so you're, again, I know it was on a slide, but I can't see the slides, your rents start at seventeen?
That's correct.
And go up to?
So they can go up for the cottages up to three thousand dollars, it just depends, but those cottages are much larger. But on average, our new property, for example, let's say we start at seventeen hundred dollars and we go up to twenty-seven hundred dollars for the cottages. And then our other community in Allen, Texas starts at thirteen hundred dollars and goes up to seventeen hundred dollars.
Okay, and that's a totally functioning, independent or, or apartment with kit-full kitchen, one-bedroom, living area, give me the square footage approximately.
Thank you, our average square feet is nine hundred and ninety-eight feet.
Okay, and?
They're really large units.
And then you have the amenities of a pool, lap pool, et cetera, everything that was on that page. Um, and then, so, I mean, in my, I understand that this is a different product than, um, what I am gonna call typical assisted living facilities, ALFs.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so in my mind, and I'm just speaking out loud, this aligns more with almost an apartment comes, concept. As you said, for more, you know, folks of a certain age group, but there's no care provided onsite.
So that's correct. So for example, um, independent living has no care provided onsite as well. It's a so that's correct. So assisted living is a first start of care. So we don't provide care, but we do engage local home, home healthcare offices. And that's, that's really what's allowed these communities. So we, we have an office for third party home healthcare and they come and they provide medical services.
On site.
Correct.
Okay, um, and then um, I'm just, I, I would like to hear about the engagement at the public input meeting. Which um, Parks, I don't know that you really addressed that yet, so maybe you could. But also I am extremely curious about the lot of land that is in the middle of this or on the edge of this thing, not in the middle, but kind of looks almost kind of like it's being surrounded by it. Um, I would like to understand what's going on there.
That's, that's a great question. Um, I forget the gentleman's name, but I've spoke to him a few times. Uh, that, that's his mother's house that he took. Uh, he's happy to have us as a neighbor and he wants to keep that house. Uh, he's a hairstylist and he would like to cut, right now he would like to cut our residents hairs and our salon. But um, I asked him if he'd be interested in selling it. Uh, but yeah, he said yes for a number that I'd, I'd hate to say, but it's uh it would be more expensive than all of our land that we own.
Yeah.
Um, and, and the idea is he, he doesn't really want to sell it.
Okay, and you currently do own the property?
So we own the 5.9 acres and then we put under contract the additional 3.83 acres, which took us some time in order to try to bring our density as low as possible for the city. And our last zoning approval was 21 units to the acre. And we were hopefully, we're thinking maybe that if, if, if we're in the 18 unit to the acre, we'll make everybody feel much more comfortable than going back to that original number.
Okay, alright, that's my questions for now, but I would like to hear the information about the public input meeting. And maybe they're there in the audience and they'll speak themselves.
They are, and, and in fact, I'll briefly talk about it, but also I mean, I, I think they would like to speak too. So um, if I can go back to the site plan, the colorized site plan, it gives an overview. Um, and, and you know, obviously they are, you know, surround the community. And when we sent out the notice letter, I did receive several phone calls from folks up and down these roads. As I related, you know, I talked, I fielded some calls and when people understood it was an age restricted, restricted community. They obviously quickly got the fact that the proximity to the church was a positive factor there. Um, and we had a great, oh, I say great, Zoom is, is always awkward. But we had, we had a Zoom public participation meeting that led to a, a meeting onsite with the community where we walked all the adjacent subdivision, all the adjacent streets and went to the backyards. Um, they have a tremendous amount of water that comes off this site and just the topo, they, they have low backyards and some real drainage problems. Um, if you will, looking at the site plan, the back of the cottages and all the parking, all that will be uh captured and sent to the detention pond that is down by 92. Uh, so we will drastically reduce the amount of drains that goes off our property. The only thing that would be getting into their backyards would be the very back of those properties, which would be landscape as being a neighbor. I mean, um, they recognize that we will be creating a, a step down between the retail that's going there and and as I said, I mean, we're actually going to be sharing that, that drive off of 92 with a, with a fast food restaurant. And you know, some of the things that, that, that uh is often not thought about is that it's, it's a minor detail, but our landscaping is all maintained by a professional company that comes in during the week and does it all at one time. One of my pet peeves in my neighborhood is no time on Saturday or Sunday is not someone not blowing an edge uh and, and disturbing my peace and quiet good. We will be a quiet neighbor. Um, our residents, other than, I, I guess we shouldn't have shown them pictures of them partying, but in general, they're quiet. Um, and, and our, and, and in seriousness, our operations are quiet. And so I will be a quiet neighbor. We will provide the landscaping and buffering and pension uh between our communities and work with them on, on existing drainage problems. But it was a big, you know, I, I'm, y'all know how much I enjoy the public participation process. I hate that if we have to be a Zoom now so much. It didn't result in a good, good meeting. So I, I'll let them, I think the HOA president is gonna talk.
Or one question, in uh, in three years, I'll be able to rent, say you get this. What will keep me from renting here and bringing my six kids with me?
The Federal Fair Housing Act allows age restricted communities to exclude children. That's the whole reason why you have the age restriction is um, the Federal Fair Housing Act came in the seventies that required, that disallowed people excluding families. You used to have, uh, you used to have apartment complexes that were adult only uh apartment complexes. And the federal government decided that the swinging apartments were no good. And so they came in and said, you can't have an apartment complex or any rental environment that excludes families because they were worried about, you know, families not having places to live. They wrote an exception that says if you create an age restricted meeting, which this will be, it'll be uh done uh in compliance with the Federal Fair Housing Act and in compliance with your local ordinance, but more importantly, the Federal Fair Housing Act, and it excludes children.
Parks, let me say one thing about that. So that, that's the legal uh jargon when it comes to fair housing. The practical nature of it is that our average age of our residents on average is 74. Um, we have no kids at any one of our communities. And the reason why they move into these communities is really due to isolation. They want a new sense of community. So they, they come in. So we have actually 50%, 51, 52% of our residents are married. That's a, that's a drastic swing from independent living where you have a majority that people are female as men tend to unfortunately die off uh later. Uh, but you know, at 74, um, they're still active, but again, they move, move in once their kids have moved on and you often to sometimes move, we even have people that will follow if, if their kids have uh local jobs and, and grandkids. And they want to be near with, without the burden of homeownership.
So in uh 20 years from now, will this, say this were to get approved 20 years from now. Uh, if, if the market had more demand for multifamily, you would have to go through, is there, there'd be a designation change that would have to be approved in order to have anyone under that age?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Um, we could have moved to the public hearing. Let's go, let's go ahead and move to the public hearing, a public hearing. What do you? Who do you have, Katie? Or are there speakers?
Sandy is gonna start announcing speakers in the room first.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, hi, my name is Mike Estwell. I'm a ten year veteran. I'm on the board. I'm a homeowner. I do purchase flood insurance every year. Um, and I'm also a receiver. So I know some of the vernacular, some of the process, some of the impact of all this stuff. Um, first of all, there's several homeowners here. Um, this is not an anti project. When I signed up as a opponent or opposition, proponent, and I'll tell you why. For our purposes, our biggest concern is live with what the city county has done previously. We think this is an excellent opportunity for our little shire, our little neighborhood, um, to get a little love. Uh, as Paul mentioned, he's our president, he's here, I'm not sure if he'll speak or not. It's almost like Anzley Forest was built too soon or at the bottom of the hill. So these projects, Culvers and uh, you know, the Larkspur project. We support them in style, density and the idea of it. Um, and I'll go into the reasons why we support it at this point. And Sunday night uh made it even more why we support it. So, so a little, little history, Anzley Forest, for those of you who don't know, you've seen it on the map, built in the late eighties. Uh, in the early nineties. Highway 92 got bigger, so they changed the entrance, you know, shifted some things around. Again, it's just part of progress, not a problem. Uh, since then, development on all sides were down in Holland. So on the west and east. And on the south side of 92, there's developments. So that's all kind of starting before you to, I believe it's Roots Creek. It's a finger on Roots Creek that goes through our neighborhood. This was prior, you know, this was prior to stormwater utility, obviously. Uh, this is probably even prior to zoning regulations and zoning ordinances on building houses too close to water. Um, I'm in this flood zone, mandatory flood zone. I got flooded in 2009. So the creek there is in fact our only stormwater utility. Uh, which may become obsolete shortly. In our neighborhood is 64, 62 or 64, mountains two are up on me. The rest are in um, in the neighborhood. Twelve of them abut, well, abut uh Larkspur. Twenty of them are directly affected by the creek. All but 10 of them would, will be affected in so much as the stormwater drainage concern uh goes forward. Uh, they're on the hill as you come in the entrance, they're on the left side of the hill. Um, so it's, it's apparent to all of us in the neighborhood, the creek crosses the main road through our neighborhood crosses the creek twice, one in my backyard. Gagnon's run. And then on further north, on Justin, again, Jim Balger, he's here too. Uh, it crosses again and then it exits the north end of the neighborhood down toward into Little River, blah, blah, blah. So that's kind of how it all lays out. I'll get into the infrastructure concerns specifically here. Uh, first of all, big thanks to um City of Woodstock folks, honestly, very communicative. Chris Knott, Greg Rhodes, Brett Lee, Katie, uh, and David Palmer. We had meetings, we were in person, I know a couple of them. Parks was there. Um, the engineers were there. It's really been very amicable, honest conversations. They walked the properties that were concerned about um that abut the, the project. So that's been great. So huge thanks for that. Nitty gritty. So here are our concerns and really it's infrastructure concerns. It doesn't matter if it's this applicant, the Larkspur leader, Noah, his, his team or somebody else, we're gonna be here, you're gonna see us at every single one of these. Because the concerns that we have supersede whatever it bill.
Sir, real quick, I apologize. This is David Hacker. Um, we have a, I meant to announce that we have a three minute minimum. So if you could try to pull, bring this together, I would appreciate it.
Well, you know what you told me in there?
Sorry about that.
So here are our concerns. Firstly, prior, prior to building uh, the engineering is sewer tie-in, stormwater running. Sewer tie-in on the north side of the neighborhood is an issue now because of the tie-in from First Baptist, Woodstock. The city knows that's an issue. If this goes in, does that allow us to make some amends to the system? While we're building, spending $10 now is moving to $50 later, dollars are going to fall settle. The type, size, age of pipe, don't know what's going through there. Will it support this? Can it be remedied when this goes in? If the system backs up, it backs up to them. Also another concern. And whatever the density is, a higher density is not gonna help that situation. The system is taxed at this point. And there's, they've come out and tried to remedy on the, on the, on the north side. On the south side, the easement, hopefully the projects have been working together. Uh, we're pushing for an easement that comes through one of the property others uh yards so that we can keep our bunker at 92. Uh, there's trees uh and growth and the security and safety less the issues in the ground, she is directly affected by that. So we're pushing for A, a conversation between holders and Larkspur and also to have an easement that allows us to maintain some safety and security and buckering from highway 92. Stormwater runoff, big issues. Most of the guys, most of the homeowners sitting here experience it. There was a project done between the city and the county and the, the original owners, the previous owners. Put a culvert in there. It is now a nightmare for us. There's an opportunity for this project to remedy that. We can talk about the grading and the bumper and all that stuff. And you know, we're not, we're not putting a finger at the city or the county or whoever that. But in 2004, it became a river through uh, through Morty's yard and Linda's uh experience of flooding at this point as well from that property. Is an awesome.
I really appreciate it. We kind of need to, I need to stop you here. And um, if you have notes, we need to let the next, next speaker, but thank you so much and, and and if you would submit your notes to staff, that would be great. We'd like, we'd like to hear what you, what your points are. Um, our next speaker? We have three minutes. I, I apologize for not making that announcement earlier, but three minutes. Appreciate your help.
Oh, thank you. I'm going to uh underline some of the things that Mike said, but my name's Jim Balger. I live in Anzley Forest. I've lived there for more than 30 years. So I've been through some of the prior uh development discussions about that property. And like Mike, I'm not necessarily opposed in concept to the development. But there are concerns we have both as far as property value and as far as quality of life for the residents banned from the forest because we directly abut this property. So
Sir, real quick, um, please give us your name and address for the record.
Sir, Jim Balger, 323 Justin Drive.
Got it.
So the first question, as Mike brought up, is water contained. Uh, this is a lot of hardscape that compared to the 2014 proposal. This is about three or four additional acres of hardscape. And I know there's a detention pond planned as part of this. The question is, is that gonna be enough? Because as Mike said, we've already had some runoff, substantial runoff from the undeveloped property into some of the backyards along Shannon Drive. And as far as that hardscape goes and that runoff, where's that gonna go? And is it going to impact Roots Creek? Because we do have some residents that are in a flood plain, some that are not. But is Roots Creek, which runs directly through the middle of the neighborhood, going to be affected from erosion? Or other problems with that? The sewer system, as Mike said, we currently have some problems. There is a noticeable odor regularly from the sewers and it seems to be worse on Sundays and Wednesdays when First Baptist has service. So now we add another 170 units with people that are basically in place all day. And the question is, is that sewer system, which is already a concern, is that gonna put additional strain on it? Or is that something that needs to be addressed? Then you have just quality of life issue. Yes, there's a three story building, but not that far from it, there are backyards, there are homes and there are sightlines from those second and third stories into the backs of those homes, into those backyards. Is there some kind of buffer? Is there some kind of natural buffer, trees, whatever that can be planted? That would cut down those sightlines, cut down any effects from lighting, cut down any effect from noise, that those residents would suffer? Now, all these issues were mentioned in the public hearing, they were all mentioned in the other discussions. It's just at this point, we have no assurances or specifics as to if or how those are going to be addressed, so. Really, my request of the commission is just that, you know, we consider what the quality of life and what the property value impact is on the residents of Anseley Forest. And are there considerations, are there conditions, are there requirements that can be put on this development, if it's approved, that would address those issues? Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been living thirty years, and I'm not sweating them off. Hi, my name is Linda Ward, I live at three eighteen Justin Drive. I will have been in my home one year on September twentieth if I don't get washed away. I come from Fairfax County, and I have to give you a disclaimer, I watched development destroy beautiful Virginia County, and to the point that when I retired, I couldn't even afford to live. My biggest concern about this development is water, because Sunday night, I got three feet of water in my house. The water crested on the back of my house, in spite of the fact I've been working all summer on drainage, because, as you remember, January, February, and March, we got like forty inches of water in three months. Sewage is a problem, I don't enjoy going out in my backyard and smelling sewer gas. And now's the time to correct it, after they build a hundred and seventy more units, of people who are like me, who know that. Other issue is groundwater. I had no idea, with a house that is perched on the side of the hill, and y'all are welcome to penning and glass of iced tea, anytime to smoke on my door, that I would have the amount of drainage difficulties on this property that I have been living with. So my request is, no matter what you do in developing that property, please. I spent forty-three years being a registered nurse, working in pandemics and epidemics and all this crap. And I waited forty years to own my own little single-family home, and I really, really don't think it's beyond pale to ask my neighbors and my fellow community members in Woodstock to please protect my property. I can't pick the house up and move it. I am one of those people who bought this house to age in price, because I am disabled. And I am actually quite frightened at this point, because no matter what happens on that property behind us, once they get their infrastructure, and they may very well help with the water problems that we're experiencing. But in the meantime, with construction, I can't even begin to tell you how much fear I have, or what kind of flooding and damage I'm going to sustain. That's pretty much all I had to say, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Paul Belgrater, five oh three Bond Drive, I'm the president of the association. In summary, the board is in total agreement with the project. It's a quality project compared to the two previous projects that were proposed. It is unique, it is groundbreaking, and I think would be very positive for the community of Woodstock. Our concern, and I'll reiterate, is storage and surface water. Surface water, picture in your mind, six hundred feet from these roads empties into ninety-two. Ninety-two, at the time that Anseley Forest was developed, was a two-lane highway. It currently is a four-lane highway, both east and west drain into our creek, and the community across from us also drains into pretty free. And so when Anseley Forest was developed, none of that was there. So we have a thirty-two-year gap. The other, so the surface water is definitely a concern. We feel that the project will help guide some of that surface water into their water reservoir and catch basin, and at least help those homes that border that development. That could be a major plus for us. But still, the water retention pond or management pond is, and we have talked to the engineers at the city, and so we're, we've been talking to them about that. The major thing is the sewer, yet the city would consider scoping the sewer, to see if there's any weak spots, if there are tree roots, if things over the years have impeded, because there is no question, there is a sewer odor that permeates. My house is right there, where the connection for the Baptist church comes into our sewer system. So for us, our concern is the sewer surface water. We are very pleased that this quality project is there along with Culvers. Because of their deny, obviously, something else is going to come in. And it may not be anywhere near the quality that these two projects are. And right now, I appreciate and tell the Woodstock group that your engineers and your people that met with us have been very positive, and I hope we continue that relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Welcome.
I can respond to a couple of points.
Before, before we do that, I'm just going to close the public hearing and invite the applicant up. Go ahead, Parks.
Just real, real briefly, I just wanted to make a couple of points, feeding off of the comments from, from the neighbors. And they have an existing problem, the existing problem is on the, really kind of the north side of the property. Almost, if you look at, at coming in from the church, if you look at the dome, just kind of going southwest, if you will, from that is where the drainage problem is. That's the property that we have under contract, it's an additional piece. One of the pieces, one of the things that's not immediately obvious about this case, is that this is an opportunity for it to be developed at one time. That drainage problem, if this were, if the front piece was developed, if the Culvers was developed, and then maybe our front piece, the adjacent Culvers was developed, you're not going to touch that drainage box. And as you know, Mr. Hacker, that, you know, the obligation of adjacent property owners to replicate existing drainage, so that existing drainage is not good. And the only way that that can be addressed is if this property is all developed at one time, because that allows us to capture the drains of the northern part of the property, bring it to the southern part of the property, because the drainage that's causing the existing problems goes through there. And we, you know, have a twenty-five-foot buffer that we've gotten through there, we've pledged to them a privacy fence, also adjacent to that buffer, and with the trades and such, we will protect the view shed, and also environmentally sensitive lighting, so that we do not create glare on adjacent properties in, in that respect. And so, and we're open to any other suggestions related to that. Be glad to work with the city and work with the neighbors to identify the single problems that they're facing, and, and give them our resources to do that.
Thank you, has, has there been any engineering done on the site by you all, any? Over, over the years, Noah, can you address that?
There is not, what we did just do is, we did send the local landscape crew in, or we at least paid for it, I know that. And, and we're cleaning up the, the trees and the foliage, so as soon as we can move forward, we'd like our team to get in there and, and you get, you know, address all these concerns.
Okay, is, Janice, are you available? This, and now I invite any of the other planning commissioners to ask, but Janice, have you, have you looked at these, this community, this, the community's concerns regarding the, the water issues that they have?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I, I've just only seen the plan, their site plan that we reviewed together as staff. So I haven't been on any of, any additional meetings yet.
Okay, well, regarding, and maybe you're not the one to ask regarding the flooding that they, they mentioned and the sewer issues, but is that something that the city is, is it part, I mean, usually the developer, whoever developed the neighborhood kind of owns that, and if they didn't plan it well, but has the city had any conversations or public works? Is there anything that's happened with that right now?
I'm not, I'm not sure where they're at, but I believe they've been talking to Water and Sewer, and possibly, like Pat, Pat Flood or Rob Hogan, have, may have been involved.
And I can, I can answer that a little bit, because I've been tangentially involved in those discussions, if you like.
Go ahead.
One, one of the issues is the, the neighborhood very much does not want sewer production to come down through and enter their subdivision from ninety-two. We have the ability of working, if Culvers and us can work together, work with the city, there's a possibility of entering their neighborhood through an easement without creating a, what, what they don't want is a opening up of the tree scape that is run along ninety-two and opening that up. There's been discussions about being able to do that, we'd be part of that, invited to help.
Okay, I, I was just notified that we actually had one more public speaker, and I apologize, but is, are you, everybody okay with me opening that back up for the speaker to be heard?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to open the public this up one more time to let one other, one last speaker.
Hello, my name is one of the, I'm saying, three fourteen Justin Drive. And like other neighbors, our concern is about a surface water and sewer. But on surface water, based on this drawing that I'm seeing here, most of our problem is on north side of this plant. And also, the slope of the water goes to northeast of this area. As I see, the detention pond is on southeast, and I don't know how this detention pond can catch all the water on very, very top left side of this, this plant, because over there is one of the lowest points in our subdivision, and also in this development plant. And also, there are another concern that I have, is I want to know what is the highest elevation on this construction, based on a lowest point on our subdivision? And I want to see, when we look at a backyard, we see a three, four-story building, how high is that building? And does it cover everything, and don't see anything in front of us, or maybe it's a little, you know, see some, some of the stuff? Thank you so much.
Did, did you state your name and address, sir?
Yes, my address is three fourteen Justin Drive.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, we, that's, that's the final person speaking, and we'll close that, but I think those were similar questions. Does anybody on, on the commission have any questions that they'd like to address with the applicant or staff?
I have two questions for staff, real quick. Katie, the, the sewage drainage and the, the runoff, all that stuff, I mean, I think the, the current issue is obviously, I think, a public works issue, and, and aside from this, this case, but as far as this, when this, if this goes, if this went forward, any drainage, sewage runoff, all that, I mean, that would be part of the approval or permitting process, that'd have to be signed off, correct?
That's right, when, during the site plan review process, we would have our Water and Sewer Department and our Public Works Department review their plans, that at that point will be fully engineered, they're not fully engineered just yet, but yes, at that point, they would have to meet all of the state requirements.
Okay, and one more question. I know you talked about, during your presentation, I guess some lack of data or info in terms of the city's requirements for affordability. And I know Noah spoke a lot about affordability and certain metrics. Does, kind of put you on the spot a little bit, does any of that, what, what his presentation, does any of that at all fit in or meld with? Or would you have to look at it more closely in terms of the city's definitions of affordability, or can you comment on that, or do you know?
Yeah, so I can comment on that, we actually, I sent an email to the applicants, asking them, first of all, if they could provide any affordability at all, and then what it might take to get affordable units, like how many total units, do they need a higher density? Do we need maybe a different affordability calculation? And so they, they didn't respond back to me with any information, so actually, tonight's the first time I've heard about that discount for teachers and public service people. I don't know how much the discount is, but, you know, that could potentially factor in. Another thing that staff talked about during the Development Process Committee meetings was that our definition for affordability does have that fifty percent of AMI. But what if we came up with a different calculation, like thirty percent of AMI? These are some of the conversations that we kind of were hoping to be able to negotiate through with the applicant, but I, they didn't respond to me, and I think it might be because we were kind of running out of time, you know, coming up to this meeting. And, and so, you know, I think we would be happy to evaluate that again, I think, you know, from the staff's perspective, we just didn't find a really compelling reason to go against the, you know, the, the council's policy, and to grant the density bonus, so. You know, I'm not saying that our affordability definition is perfect, because we haven't really had a lot of, you know, opportunity to use it and work through it, but there probably is a, a compromise to be made.
Noah, Noah, or, or into our parks, is, based on what she just said, is there, I know you, you presented a bunch of stuff tonight, so I appreciate that. But is there any way you could provide staff with more info, detail, in line with that affordability? In terms of your definitions, and see, giving them a chance to analyze that, is that, would that be a possibility, or?
That, that would be a possibility, but just to be clear, these are, these are national and state programs, and they usually, they always come with some type of subsidy that allows them to be affordable. So for, for, for Woodstock, and I'm not saying you can't, for, for Woodstock to define their own AMI test, you, you, I, I hope you guys don't go down a rabbit hole there that, that's unachievable, because there are national metrics that fifty percent of AMI is, is there for a reason. So we, we are happy to provide, but just to be clear on density, because that's a great question people ask, if you just build more units, if I build more units, I can't build a cheaper unit for people that can pay less. My units cost me about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars per door, that's just what they cost, and with construction pricing going up, and lumber, it's even more so. So if you're going to have that AMI test, somebody has to pick up that additional cost at the property, if it's not subsidized by taxes, a TIF or whatnot. So I, I'm happy to provide as much information as you guys want, but there is such a robust amount of information, everybody's always trying to solve for the lowest price point possible to make a development work, I mean, that's, that's the best thing, because then you get more residents quicker, so people can afford it, but it, there's always a tail end there and a flip side of that coin. And one thing about the, the affordability test, I don't know if you, if you asked the, the, the next door neighbor, Anseley neighborhood, if you know, their feelings on, on the affordable component. But I know, just economically, it, it doesn't work on its face, but I can, I can provide you all the data you guys need to prove that. With, without a subsidy, I should say, I'm sorry, without a subsidy.
And I just want to make it clear that we weren't saying that they need to get federal subsidies, we were asking, what can we do to ensure affordability? Because they presented that they are more affordable than other projects in the city, and I think we all probably believe that and agree with that. But we have no way to, to keep that affordability, or really even understand if it actually is, you know, affordable compared to other uses, so. I think, like I said, I think there's more work to be done here, if, if we can keep having more conversations about it, but as of now, they have not offered any official affordability at all. That we could enforce.
And Katie, I, I more than appreciate that, everybody has their, their, their program, and our program is quite simple, there's some very smart tax credit developers out there. They're very hard to obtain from the state and federal government, they're becoming harder and harder to obtain, and it's a different program, and they're unable to offer the program, so again, our, our, our MO is providing the most moderate So again, our, our, our MO is providing the most moderately affordable, relatively affordable price point, and offering the most programs possible. And I mentioned $100,000, $80,000 to $100,000 per year in programs that we offer at all of our communities. That's fact-based. So again, I'm, I'm happy to provide this information, but without a TIF or, or, or a statewide or local subsidy from Woodstock, it'd be hard. But again, our objective is to pay you guys full taxes, and you can apply those taxes to the neighbor sewage problem, and, and we're here to help. We really are here to help.
If I can just real briefly say, I mean, some of, some of it is just comparing apples and oranges. I happen to be involved in the project that has the only other project in the city, and it is, has an affordable component. And, and when I was working with them, one of the things that came up was like, well, what service do you provide? And the answer was, by law, if you are under that affordability program, you can't offer a service. It's just a box, and, and as affordable as they can get. So, you know, it, it may be something about providing some data that, breaking down our rent to say, what's our actual rent versus what are the services that go along with that rent? To get the city composition, we are, are meeting the goal, the intent and purpose of the affordability. Because we think we are meeting that intent and purpose by providing quality housing for a large segment of the population that's not being served now.
Anybody else? Renee? Unmute yourself, please.
All right, there we go. Katie, I'm gonna ask you a question first. How many, I, I know, can somebody pull the page back up on how many, what the breakdown of single-family, multifamily?
It's 15% cottages.
No, of right now, what we currently?
Oh, oh, in the city? Yeah, that'll be in my presentation way back. Oh, there you go. Go back to hot sheet. Two more forward or three more forward. There you go.
Okay, so I know our goal is 5%, and we currently, you're saying are at 8.4%.
Yes, and we were over the goal when we made this, when, when they adopted this policy. That's why it's a goal and not, not just a total limit. So just to put that out there, I believe we were already over the 5% when this was enacted. So that doesn't mean that we should necessarily add more. It means that, you know, our goal is lower than what we had when we started. So the goal was to either balance out with more other types of units, or have less. Obviously, we're not gonna take away single-family, but to not build more.
Okay, and I know that we have got, and I don't know if this is in these numbers I'm looking at right now, a lot of single-family coming online.
This is what exists right now, I think, the permits issued.
Permits, so where it says?
Brantley should correct me if I'm wrong, please.
Says total single-family residence is 12,879. Does that include all, everything up above it? It permits everything issued to date?
I believe so.
Okay, can we clarify?
Here's Brantley. Thank you, Brantley.
Sorry, yes, it does. It includes that, the permits figure, the permit figure to date, yes, the 12,000 does.
So that's everything approved. It may not be built, but it's approved to be constructed.
Right, the majority of that 12,879 is built, though. If the second we permit the structure to construction, it, it goes into the total. And lately, people have been, been building as fast as they can. So most of that figure is built, I would say.
But what's not included is stuff that's approved by zoning but doesn't have building permits. Is that right, Brantley?
That's right. And we try, and we have an inventory of probably 1,000 lots, 1,200 lots that have yet to be built, and when they're permitted, they'll be added, added to that almost 13,000 figure right there.
All right, that's kind of sort of what I was looking for, to throw into these, you know, real numbers. And then as far as multifamily units, do we have anything coming online for that?
We do have a case in the pipeline, I believe.
But not, but we haven't heard that case yet.
Right.
No, there's nothing, the only thing in that number that's not been built is 180 apartments that John Wheeler was approved for, multifamily in South Main. And then I think Avonlea had a third phase with 100 units. So those figures are included in that total, but again, the majority of that 97 is built. And outside of that number, there, there are no apartments in the pipeline that are, that are active right now.
Okay, and do we have any senior age-restricted units that are not built?
What about the Oak Hall project? Is that, those don't have permits yet, though.
That, that we've approved, that could come online with a permit?
Yeah, Oak Hall's factored in that 15, 14.
Okay.
That, that's, the multifamily and the age-restricted are pretty static numbers. Anything that's been entitled, whether it's built or it's been entitled, is in that figure. But the majority of both of those figures is actually constructed and built.
Okay. And then another question, either whoever, Katie, Brantley, the zoning for this area, or the, the village, I forgot if, I gotta see.
Community Village Center.
Community Village Center. You know, what else would go there?
Just a second. So the Community Village Center, the description, the short description of it says, "These areas contain retail, dining, and services that serve the neighborhoods around them. These areas should be designed with a village-like approach with an emphasis on aesthetics and walkability." And the, the plan, not in the main description, but like deeper in the plan, if you start to read Community Village Center, there is a part that says that it's residential development may be appropriate if it's a multifamily anchored by substantial retail on the ground floor. So.
Multi-live-work-play?
Yeah, mixed-use building.
Mixed use.
Yeah.
Okay, um, all right, I, oh, well, yeah, no, I've already asked that question, so I'm okay. I'm good.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant in the planning commission? With that, we'll move. Commissioners, what is your, what is your desire?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve with variances. And I feel like I need to have access to the language to come up with those variances. So we, I've never done it in this format before.
Which James was, I'm not the, but Brantley, you can help us here craft her question.
Are you wanting to approve both of the variances?
Well, I need to see the language. Can we get the information in front of us?
Yeah, Steve, if you can advance a few slides, please. There's a slide that, you just passed it. Go back one, please. There you go, that's the variance slide. So these are the two sections they've requested a variance to. One is for grading and replanting in the buffer, so they would supplement it back with the, an opaque screen. And the other one is for the density going from 12 units per acre to 18 units per acre. So you could write, if you wanted to approve both of these, you could just say, write a, add a condition that says, you know, variances to these two sections is approved. And with the density, you would want to state what density you are recommending approval of. Did that help you?
Kind of.
How else can I help?
I mean, staff recommendation is not, is for not approval.
Correct.
So typically, when I make a motion, you know, I've got staff recommendation in front of me, and.
One thing you could do, Renee, if you wanted to, you could either take a recess, which is what James would normally probably recommend, in order for you to talk with some fellow commissioners, but not a quorum, which you maybe could call someone on their cellphone or something. Or you could potentially table the case, and staff will come up with some recommended conditions, or those are probably the two options if you want to approve it.
Do you wanna, do you wanna take a, a break, a recess and try to come up with something?
I mean, I, I just feel like I, I don't know that we're gonna be able to get there in this format, and I don't, I don't wanna do it halfway. Because I feel like there are some things that are important here. I mean, I could, I mean, the first thing we're being asked to do is to change the zoning, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So with that, then we're being asked to also grant these two variances.
Yep.
And, and that's basically, is that it?
That's the whole request, yes.
Okay.
And normally, staff would add other conditions, like maybe something about drainage, or something about landscaping, or something like that. But, you know, if you, you could, if you want, we could look at some conditions between now and council, but you could also just recommend approval, because that might be what you want to do.
No, I would like to, I would like y'all to, to recommend some conditions. However, I know that, and I, I don't know how to word it, and you helped me craft it, so that I know that that's taking place between now and council. Okay?
I understand you, but I'm not, I don't know what the best solution is.
If, if, if I, I can make a recommendation to approve the zoning change, and approve the variances, and then I, and then the density, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna approve both of these variances, grading in the buffer and replanting to supplement. And then I'm gonna approve 18 units per acre with no affordable units, or assisted living units, or bonus. That's part of my motion. And then the next part of my condition I would put on this is conditioned upon staff reviewing the language that we were just talking about regarding the drainage, the sewer, the infrastructure between now and council to come up with further possible language conditions.
Got it.
Can I, can I, well, generally, though, that's an engineering, isn't this, Katie or Brantley, isn't that, without the, the applicant providing engineering, there's not but so much that you can do, because engineering already has, follow, has to follow the law, and all, they have to provide all this information prior to that. Isn't that, I mean, is it, is that really needed for a, a, a condition on this motion? Since that's something the applicant has to do to get a land disturbance permit and, and get all of these things? What, do we need to put that in?
I'll defer to Brantley, yes, since, Brantley, you gotta unmute, though. There we go.
Um, you know, if you wanna craft something now, it's something that we could, you know, obviously work with the applicant to, you know, revise some language or work through some language between a planning and council. And prior to when we get to council, but I would imagine, based on what I've seen so far, I don't know that, I don't, they've clearly not done full site plans, but they probably have some pretty good preliminary engineering, I would imagine, based on the drawings I'm seeing. So, you know, we could, you could definitely include something that I think would be kind of a framework for moving forward, if that makes sense. And it might be a little redundant, but I don't think there's necessarily any harm in that.
Okay, so can you give me some recommended language?
Like, I think what you said already was good enough.
I mean, we're very comfortable that, that sending it back to, between now, mayor and council, having this meeting with VPC. And, you know, actually, you know, by state law, we wouldn't have to, then reduce the drainage in that whole section. We, our site plan and development will do it, so that's might be a condition we can add to.
Right.
See state law, and those are the things that we can craft between now and mayor and council.
Right, that's what I'm trying to make sure is, is carried forwards between now and council. The drainage and the sewage issues that are obviously a problem, an existing issue, that it sounds like everybody is in agreement, could be resolved with all of this development happening simultaneously. So I just want to make sure that is what, that gets incorporated or carried forward.
Okay, are we clear on that?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a, a recommendation for approval based on approving the variances and the language that would be, that will be clarified even further regarding stormwater management and sewer management of the site.
Correct, correct.
I, I'd like to, or, it feels like we need to maybe clarify that a little more, but.
Well, between now and council.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the, on the table. Do we, do we have a second? Can I second it for discussion purposes? I'm gonna second it for discussion purposes.
All right, thank you.
Let's open it up for discussion. Brandon?
Uh, yeah, I, so I, I just put my father into assisted living. I know this is different than an independent living, so I'm, you know, I appreciate all the stuff going into this, and can definitely appreciate the quality senior living. Also veterans, I appreciate your, the generous discount you have to veterans. I, I think something like this really could work here. You know, even though with, there is some issues with the future zoning and some current zoning, things like that. I guess my, my only contending points with this is, per the staff's presentation, they're right of the not taking advantage of the density, density, relaxation of density requirements, given the affordability data. And I know there's, there's different ways to look at that. I wish we, you know, staff had a better data they could look at, or there was more of that presented here that we could have, that they could have made it a good recommendation on. So that was my, that's my first contending point. Because as they said, to go past the, or go over council's policy of 5%, which is already over. And that's, that's up to council to go over that, not really us. So to do that, you know, I think we'd have to have a very compelling reason for the staff's recommendations. And then the other thing, I know there are some very good amenities, which, which I think are really, really nice. But I, I think the lack of, or per the code being close to other groceries, pharmacy, whatever, all the other stuff that's listed in there. I know that's not necessarily limited to, to only certain items. And I get it, the way people getting their drugs and groceries and all that is changing. I completely understand that. But unfortunately, I have to evaluate it based on the way our code and ordinances are written now. So I would go for, if, if, I know there's, this is not the motion on the table, but this is up to me, I'd like to have seen a, an affordability analysis by staff based on closer to what they needed, that data, before they can make a recommendation on the density. But I think as it is now, I can't, I don't really favor the, definitely that variance or the project base, or the development based on mainly that, without having any data on affordability that would meet the requirement for the density.
So are you, would you like? So are you, would you like, so, okay, so you just, there's no friendly amendment or anything that you could, you could bring to the table? You just can't support it based on the way it's put, put forth?
Well, it's either, I guess if I was going to approve this or vote in favor of this amendment, that's kind of a, kind of a catch 22, because I guess the only thing I would, I would amend would be taking out variance number two with the requirement for the density increase to 18.
Is, are you, okay, is that something that, that you want to put forth?
Well, who decides that, Renee, because you started it, is that something you're interested in or no?
You have to make a friendly amendment to me.
Yeah.
Okay, but are I'm saying, would you support something like that for this one?
Um, it is, I'm guessing, and maybe we could, I mean, this is not the way we normally do this in discussion. But, you know, the question would go back to the applicant. Is the project feasible at 12 units per acre?
Okay, could I, could I say something important, just jumping into the discussion? And actually, Deborah, did you have anything you wanted to add? I can kind of follow it up, or Matt, did you want to have any discussion?
I was just concerned that there's really no proof of hardship for the increase of units to be, to go from 12 to 18. There's nothing provided to us that tells us there's a hardship for that increase.
Gotcha. And Matt, did you have?
Wouldn't be anything new, it'd be pretty much repeating what Brandon has just gone over, but we stated considerably less eloquently.
Well, I'll just, I'll just put my two cents in real quick, is that my mom's in a community and they have a big fee. It's in, the monthly rent's higher, but it's more affordable. And I know in this general market, based on my experience in, in commercial real estate, is that there's just different, different product types that developers, operators bring. You know, Holford's one higher end type, you've got some, my mom lives on a 100 acre community up in North Carolina, and it's a staged care. This is affordable housing based on a certain segment of our population. Colbert Square down by the, by the bowling alley is, is affordable. And they have a long list of people that want to get into that. So our, I think affordable is kind of a relative term because it's based also, look on, look in our community, the type of people that live in our community. We don't, you know, we don't have subsidized housing per se. We don't have tax credit deals. It's hard to get that here. In fact, I believe at one time there was a tax credit deal that was tried and it didn't work and the land got scraped and, you know, it's, anyway, I just, affordable is something that's hard to, I think, peg considering the, the tax credits and the way that the federal government works that, or the state government. Because I do know that they're, they are not giving any more tax credit deals for this year. And there's a waiting list of people that hope to get things next year because I've been working on, on a project in the south part of Atlanta. Anyway, so relatively speaking, affordable for our community is something that's, we have to look at. But that's all I meant to say about that. And, you know, I, I had, did, did you want to make a friendly amendment? Is, is, did you want to allow the, the applicant to answer that question, Renee? Is that what you were asking?
I, I mean, that's what I would consider to be proper protocol. But before we entertain that, I would like to, you basically made my case for me, David, that this price point is missing. And so I'm in the situation of having to put my mom in an assisted or independent living. I went through this with my dad four years ago. This is a desperately needed price point. I am willing to give up that lack of dens, or I'm willing to take the extra density to get more of a product that I feel is so valuable. So I should have stated that, made it a little clearly in the beginning. But you just did it exactly right, David. So, and I was part of the last zoning case. David and I are probably the only two, maybe, I don't know, Deborah may have been there, on the last zoning case on this property where we were going to have an assisted living come in or senior living. The value of that product being right there across from Woodstock Baptist Church, to me, is immeasurable. I know so many seniors, my mom goes to Woodstock Baptist Church, so many seniors that that would be a godsend to them to be able to live in this type of a facility that close. So I was all for it the last time this, this product came through. I'm, so I put it in that specific location. I know we have an overabundance of assisted living facilities in Woodstock. And so if it were not any, if it were any other location, I would not be in favor of this. So I want to clarify that, okay? So I personally don't feel the need to ask the developer the question, but if Brandon, you wouldn't want to do that, that would be up to you.
No, I don't need to ask the question. I would just present the friendly amendment to eliminate variance number two. But it sounds like you don't want to do that, so that's fine.
I would not accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
All right, well, with that said, we have a motion on the table. All in favor? Say yes, Deborah?
No.
Matt?
No.
Renee?
Yes.
Brandon?
No.
And I'm a yes, so we, that did not pass. Three to two. So do we have another motion on the table? Anyone else?
I don't think we have another option for another.
Can we do that if we disapproved it or?
No, it's done.
I guess it fails then, right? That's
It's done.
Okay, all right. Well, you'll get to, Parks, go see the council and make your case there. Is there anything else we need to bring up then, move to the next case? Okay. All right, well, we're going to move to the next case, Z134-20, Transport Solutions of America.
All right. There we go. Okay, all right, is everybody ready? Can y'all hear me?
We got you.
Thank you, somebody, everybody for nodding. All right, this is Z134-20, Transport Solutions of America. Next slide, please. It's in Council Ward 2, the applicant, as I said, is Transport Solutions of America. This is on the 108 Arnold Mill property, which used to be the community center and the Magnolia Thomas House property. Next slide, please. Here you can see the zoning map, both of the two parcels involved here are zoned DT CBD. And you may remember this being, getting variances a few years ago for PLAY to do their corporate headquarters here, but they have moved on and sold the property to Transport Solutions of America, so, which is an office use, just as PLAY was. Office uses are designated as P*6 in CBD, which means that they can only be upstairs or on the back, but the street frontage of the property needs to have a use other than office use. So they can be on a floor of a building, which is not directly adjacent to a publicly accessible street. So this is, this applies in the CBD to properties on these streets, as you can see in the bottom right-hand corner, and it includes Arnold Mill Road, which is where we are here. So next slide, please. And the applicant, as I said, has purchased the property and is using these existing buildings for their corporate offices. They have plans to demolish the old kitchen on the back of the Magnolia Thomas House and to build a modern addition, which does not require variance. The reason it doesn't require variance is because there are no facades of the building that will be adjacent to public streets. So the reason that they can't just go ahead and build this right now, though, is because the previous conditions from the PLAY case have a requirement for a very specific architectural design, that of course is different from what they want to do here. They have already installed upgrading landscaping on the process, or on the property, which you may have noticed driving by, and they plan to keep the Magnolia Thomas facade. Next slide. Excuse me, so this is a condition amendment request because the property carries existing conditions of zoning from the PLAY case, which is the most recent one. And those, a lot of those were carried over from the first case on this property for rezoning, which was an office case also, ZO9316. So each of these cases required the specific architecture in the zoning conditions that you can see here on the right. And the, like I said, the proposal to build this addition, it doesn't conform to this approved architecture. So even though it doesn't need a variance, we still need to amend these conditions in order to let them build their building. Previously, the first zoning for, for this top building here, you can see the property was rezoned from, half of it was DT MRA and half of it was DT CBD. And then, so that, that first case zoned it all DT CBD for the office. And then in the second case for PLAY, they asked for a CUP to have the office use there, and that was granted under the conditions of zoning, including infrastructure improvements, which PLAY did not install yet. So they, they didn't fulfill most of the conditions that they were required, but they also didn't build their building. And the office use for Transport Solutions of America is currently operating in violation of zoning because they have a conditional use permit to do the office, but they haven't completed the conditions that the permit was required under. Next slide. So here's the request, they've requested to be relieved of the conditions which require them to do improvements to the property. And part of the reason is because they are not doing total construction like PLAY was. So you guys might remember PLAY was planning to demolish the Magnolia Thomas building entirely and the, and I think there were, I can't remember if they're going to demolish the community center in the back or not, but they're definitely going to demolish the street facade here that you can see and build their, their new building. So some relief might be warranted for Transport Solutions of America because they are not touching the facade of the property and they're not changing the parking lot. No longer includes the removal of existing buildings. Some of the conditions, though, were first required during 2016 during the first case, and they should have been completed when PLAY began operating an office on the property in the first place. But they were in the process, they had already submitted building plans and, for some of the buildings, and they had done some work on the property, but weren't quite there yet. So staff recommends that many of the conditions should be required and, and that also that most of the previously granted variances should be granted again. So I'll go through those as quickly as I can. Next slide, please. So you saw in the staff report, there's a huge table with all these different conditions from the different cases, and so I've got that same table copied and a little bit shortened of a version here. I'll try to go through it as quickly as I can. And the first row here is just the approvals, so rezoning, the conditional use permit. The applicant would like to continue the conditional use permit to use the property for an office, and staff recommends approval of a new CUP for office for this applicant with conditions. The second condition here that was required in the first place was about the streetscape on Bentley Parkway, and you can see it over here to the right. The first case was required to do the, the regular streetscape. The, when PLAY came, they got an engineer involved. I don't think there was an engineer involved during the first case. But when PLAY came and got an engineer involved, they explained that there was some topography and that they didn't want to take down all the trees that were on the Bentley Parkway frontage. And so staff approved a variance to allow reconfiguration of the sidewalk, to have the sidewalk directly adjacent to the curb, and then the seven-foot landscape zone to be behind the sidewalk with trees and lights. The applicant's proposal now is to not improve the Bentley Parkway frontage based on costs and also just difficulty with construction. I asked them to address each of the conditions that were required in the PLAY case to see if they could, if they could produce any of the improvements or not. And they did not address the streetlights, but they did say that they would not want to install the Bentley Parkway streetscape. So staff does recommend installation of the five-foot sidewalk. We still would allow the variance to have it directly against the curb and then installation of trees and lights behind the sidewalk, like in the 2017 case. Next slide, please. The next condition gave a variance to allow them to not put on-street parking on Arnold Mill or on Bentley Parkway, which staff still agrees with because they're, both of these are really close to that intersection at Arnold Mill and Bentley Parkway. For the streetscape along Arnold Mill Road, the PLAY case, they were required to do a 10-foot sidewalk, but they actually proposed that they wanted to do the sidewalk, because you may remember, they wanted to cover it with one of their, like, sports flooring track materials or something. And, but as I said, they were also doing major constructions to the property. So their building that they were going to build, where the Magnolia Thomas building is, it was going to include like a retaining wall as part of the building. And so in order to put in the 10-foot sidewalk here, you can see on the Arnold Mill frontage on the screen, it's got a pretty good incline up to the property. So you'd have to put in a, a pretty major retaining wall in order to get that 10-foot sidewalk in. So staff does not recommend that they be required to do that at this time because they're not doing any, any construction. But staff does recommend dedication of brightaway for the city to complete the project in the future and a contribution for other pedestrian projects in the area. And, and another part of this condition was that there should be distinctive landscaping treatment to both frontages, and staff does agree that they, the current applicant has provided some distinctive landscaping on their site. Next slide, please. This next condition is about the, the turning lane and the island on Bentley Parkway. So you can see in the image here on the right, it's got an island with the Whispering Trace Townhomes sign there. So during the first case and the second case, this condition was required. And during the first case, it said, unless determined by staff to be infeasible. And I think it said that in the second case too, but during the PLAY case, we actually looked at this and Janice looked at it to make sure that there was actually enough space to put in a left turning lane here, and she determined that there is enough space. And, and the previous applicant put it on their plan, as you can see here. So staff recommends continuing to require this left turn lane because the property has an entrance on Bentley Parkway. And during the first case in 2016, that's the part of the property that was zoned residential. So, you know, over the years, we've, we've approved things and changed the zoning, and this has gone from an event facility that's being used sometimes, and then the parks and rec offices, and now it's being used as an office. And so each time this particular improvement has been required, and staff really recommends that this definitely should be provided because the, the property has a driveway on Bentley Parkway. Without this turn lane, right now, when someone wants to turn left on Arnold Mill, if there's a backup of cars, like there is a lot of the time, other people can't turn right. And so the addition of this turning lane really would make a substantial difference to the people in the Bentley Parkway back there in that neighborhood, or those neighborhoods. So staff recommends this should be provided. They also got a variance to the 100% street facade frontage on both frontages, and staff recommends that that variance stand because, of course, with the current building configuration, they don't cover 100% of the frontages. So that would require tearing down the building. And then parking being allowed between the building and the street. If you can envision the property, there's a parking lot that kind of go, runs the length of Bentley Parkway on the property. And so that's the parking we're talking about, where we support granting the parking location variance again, because no construction is planned in these areas, it's an existing parking lot. Next slide, please. Here, this next condition was for a seven-foot wide landscape buffer along the southern property that was also required in the second case. The applicant is proposing to leave the natural screening and trees that are in place. And during this case, staff has not heard anything from any of the neighbors about wanting to have that buffer, as we did in the last case. So staff is in support of removing this condition as long as no neighbors continue to, to show up to request this during this case. The second condition here was about retaining walls, but now no walls are proposed. So staff proposes to remove this condition. The third condition here was about residential treatment, and it was related to the 2016 building. This variance is not needed, and staff recommends removing this condition because now the proposal doesn't include changing any street facades. Next slide, please. This next condition at the top is about the fire access gate, and this is the one condition that was completed by PLAY. They installed a gate over that rear access that goes into the Woodstock downtown neighborhood. So we recommend removing this condition because it's not relevant now. Same thing with the next condition. This, actually, this is the architecture condition, so this one is really relevant. The first, in 2016, the condition had something to do with EPIS on the particular building they wanted. And it would require that design, you can see Exhibit C here, in the middle column. You can see Exhibit C here in the middle column. In the Play case, they required that particular architecture with an exhibit here and then granted some variances for architecture. And then the applicant's proposal to remove this condition is the main reason that they decided to go through the process. And we do recommend removing this condition to allow the applicant to build their addition. For one thing, it doesn't require any additional variances, and we don't have an issue with them, you know, improving the properties to their liking, especially if they meet the conditions, particularly the infrastructure conditions. This last one here was a variance to the minimum parking requirements, and that was related to Play's specific design. And the applicant would be fine with keeping this condition, but staff recommends that it be removed because it really was related to Play's specific plans. Next slide, please. So here we are at the recommendation. I only have two slides of recommendation for you. I know this has been kind of long so far, but on July 22nd, the Development Process Committee voted to recommend the following conditional approvals with amended conditions. And so condition number one would be to grant the conditional use permit for this company and their successors as long as they occupy the property, subject to implementation of the following conditions. Number two, long-term outdoor storage of vehicles is prohibited. I should mention that this is a Transport Solutions of America. They can tell you more when they present what they do, but they do have something to do with having vehicles, and staff was concerned about storage on the property. So that's the reason for that condition. Number three, the streetscape along Bentley Parkway shall be constructed as shown here. That would be a five-foot sidewalk against the curb and a seven-foot landscape zone behind the sidewalk with street trees and lights. Next slide, please. Number four would grant the variance to require no improvement to the Arnold Mill Road frontage, but like I said before, we would recommend the dedication of the necessary right-of-way so the city can do this project later for the seven-foot landscape zone and 10-foot sidewalks, so that would be 17 feet of right-of-way. And a contribution shall be made to help mitigate the absence of these public improvements by paying for other pedestrian improvements in this media area. And the contribution shall be based on an estimate of construction costs as agreed upon by both the applicant and staff. Right-of-way dedication and contribution shall take place prior to building permit issuance. And if there's a dispute about the amount, then the applicant can appear again before the city council to receive a ruling. So I know this is a really long condition, but the point is to relieve them of the Arnold Mill streetscape, but to reserve right-of-way and then ask them to actually pay for what the improvements would cost if they were installing the Arnold Mill streetscape minus the retaining wall and other, you know, topography that would be needed to be dealt with. So we think it would still amounted less than actually installing the sidewalk, but we would get, you know, there would be some other improvements. Number five, applicant shall remove the median and neighborhood sign on Bentley Parkway at the Arnold Mill Road intersection and install the left-turning lane in its place as shown on the exhibit, which was included with the Play case, and we would recommend including the same exhibit here, the one that I showed you earlier. Number six, grants the variances that they need to make their property legal, basically. So variance granted for the 100% street beside frontage, parking allowed between the building and the street, the supplemental zone on both frontages being variable, because as you can imagine, on the Bentley Parkway frontage, the building's really far away, so it's wider than our supplemental zone is, or it's deeper, I guess. And then granting the variance to make them not have to put in any armed street parking on Arnold Miller Bentley Parkway. And I think that might be the last slide. Can you check? Yes, okay. You'll go back, please. That concludes my presentation, and I know the applicant is here to present, but first, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those. Yes, Renee, you're on mute, though.
So the reason they're going through this process is because to remove other conditions?
Yes, because we told them that they can't have a permit for the building that they, the building addition that they want to build because it doesn't look like that Play building that was required in the previous conditions.
Okay, so if they decide that they don't get the outcome here that they desire, they can't move forward with that addition.
Correct.
Because of the architectural design. However, are they still under obligation for the other conditions that we put on the Play property?
As long as-
Such as the streetscape improvement, sidewalk, et cetera.
As long as those conditions remain unmet, they are in violation of our zoning or of their ordinance.
And what is the ramifications of that?
Ooh, is Brantley in the room over there? Can he help me answer this question? I know that there are ramifications. I just can't, off the top of my head, I can't remember exactly what we would do. Thanks, Brantley.
Hey. I mean, the issue we're running into now is the applicant of wanting to pursue a building permit for the property and build a structure. And the way this was, the way this was approved, when it was, I think, originally approved and then the zoning was later amended, is the building approved for Play is very specific. So we're unable to approve a building permit for the property until such time as the zoning gets amended. So that's really the issue we're running into. Goes not to build the building and operate and, you know, potentially in violation of zoning, then we'd have to obviously determine what our next steps would be. I can't here tonight tell you what that would be. They would just be in violation of zoning, and we'd have to discuss with, you know, city attorney, mayor, and council, you know, what our next steps might be. But bottom line is, we're trying to work with them to migrate them into revised conditions because they have bought the property. They have a different vision for the property than the original applicant. And so this happens sometimes, and so that's why we're here tonight.
But when they bought property, and I can ask this to the applicant, they were aware of all of the existing conditions?
You'll have to ask the applicant that, I'm sorry. You'll have to answer-
I will.
Okay, all right. Is that it?
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Brantley.
Hey, Katie. The landscaping and sidewalk, five-foot sidewalk and landscaping along Bentley and all that in the original cases, that just a stipulation of the characteristics of that zoning here? Or what was that, that for originally?
Well, the code, the code requires that anytime someone improves their property and gets permits and site plans and makes improvements to their property, that they have to upgrade the streetscape if they're redeveloping a property. And so the normal streetscape requirement would be the curb and then a seven-foot landscape zone, and then a five-foot sidewalk, and then your supplemental zone, which is like the front setback. So in this case, we gave them a, we had Play a variance to switch those two things so that if they put the sidewalk right on the curb, they don't have to do as much grading, and they may not have to build a retaining wall like they thought they might have to because the topography goes up on Bentley Parkway also, just like it does on Arnold Mill. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it did, thank you.
Okay, so any other questions? If not, let's move to the applicant. Parks?
All right, I thought I, I didn't mute myself, but I did. I was already going to mute. All right, good evening. For the record, my name is Parks Officer Sam Brockton-Hop, and I represent Transportation Solutions of America. And I am here with Mr. Williamson, who is the director of the company, and also Ben Folsom, who is the architect who's been working on this project. What you see here is an aerial photograph of the property, and this is the Magnolia Thomas restaurant slash house on the front portion of the parcel. I don't know if you can see my cursor, but it's right here. And then behind it is the old senior center at one time. And the city sold both of these properties to Play, and I think some of y'all were, I know most of you were on the planning commission at the time that came through zoning. Actually, the first time it came through zoning, I represented an applicant who was going to tear all this down and build a massive office building on both these parcels, and it was going to be redeveloped in the entire frontage and inside along Bentley Parkway. Play had similar proposal, which they were going to do some very, very big improvements to the property, tear the house down or dramatically change it. And it was a pretty intensive proposed development. And that's very important to understand in this case, and that is, we're not redeveloping the property. Mr. Williamson is a local company, he owns a local company. It actually is very, very successful. It's got nationwide reach. He's got over 40 employees at this site. It's an administrative office for his business. He and his children live locally and have lived locally, and the business used to be on Highway 92. So it's a great successful story for the city of Woodstock. And he is using the buildings as they are now. What he'd like to do is tear the building that is the back, which was the kitchen for the restaurant, tear it down. It's rather unattractive and deteriorating, and replace it. It's basically about 1,600 square feet now and replace it with a 4,000 square foot building. That would be more office administrative space, so his employees can spread out more. Go to the next line. The, I hope you've had a chance to go by. They welcome people walking through the property. And again, that's going to be another feature of this presentation is that they have a absolutely beautifully landscaped piece of property. It's a little oasis when you're there, and it's very, very, very nice, and they don't mind people walking through. The only person who showed up to public participation meeting wanted to make sure that they could continue to walk their dog through the property, and the answer was yes. In this case, United Landscaping, they got a fire pit, all the nice features that you see on this landscape plan. Go to the next line. And this shows the existing building that's going to be torn down, which is the, to the back of the restaurant's kind of hash here. This is a was used for an event facility, it's just a roof structure over here. And you're going to see the next slide is going to show you how the new building tie in. And again, that's a closer, but you can see what's being removed, which is that back dashed area. Next line. This is a picture of what is being removed. And you can see to the right is the roof structure that was used for weddings and events with, when it was a restaurant. Next line. And then this building will fit that space and actually go over and basically almost touch the roof structure, so it ties it together so you can walk from building to building undercover and using the sidewalks. Next line. Another view of that, of the proposal, you see the Magnolia Thomas house behind it. Next line. And then this gets to one of the, a couple of the rubs with the case, and that has to do with, you know, Bentley Parkway. Two previous proposals on this property were basically going to be redeveloping the whole property, they're going to be redoing parking, storm work, everything just starting new. And so doing some landscape, installing sidewalks and such has a different, different element to it when you're kind of squeezing in an existing condition. For those who've not done, I mean, Bentley Parkway, the homes down there are probably built in the late 70s, would be my bet. That road's been there since that period of time. It's never had a sidewalk along there. And the topography makes it extremely difficult to be able to put in the sidewalk immediately. Go to the next line. This gives you an idea. This is looking down, that is, you're on Bentley Parkway, you're looking towards Arnold Mill Road, and you can see actually the slope is, Cameron never does it quite, quite as much as you think it would, but there's quite a bit of slope. And there's not an area, and if you have to come in to do a sidewalk, then you have to kick back in. A lot of those trees are going to have to be removed, especially down here, and you can see the amount of trees that are in here, and you're going to have to put in a wall structure, a retaining wall, because you're picking up that much of a grade difference. You see, see a picture on the left, shows you how, you can see the trees and see how they're growing in that slope, and you can get an idea of the grade difference. Next line. Again, this is looking, you're basically almost at Arnold Mill Road there, looking back and giving you an idea of kind of, you'd have to get into that hill, remove trees, put a sidewalk in. You also have a water line that runs parallel to that street. Usually the water line, water, your engineering department does not like to have that underneath sidewalks and paths, you located, that's another large ticket item to have to need that water line. Next line. And this is looking north towards Main Street on Arnold Mill Road. Your staff appropriately knows that this is a project beyond this project, and to be able to do this in for a lot of this path along there. And so this would be where you would come out if you did it in the parkway. Next line. Go back to the slide with the sidewalk, or go back to the slide with the landscape plan. And one of the things is that is important, remember I said pedestrian, people walking through our property is important note in the beginning. If we put a sidewalk on Bentley Parkway, that sidewalk will not be used because what everyone does is they walk through our property and come through and go to the upper left-hand corner and come out and to be able to walk towards the end. So I, you know, people take the path of least resistance. It's a nicer, more attractive walk. My client is welcoming of the community, engaging with the community that way, has no issues with that at all. And so you're talking about quite a bit of expenditure to be able to expand about 1,300 square feet, 1,500 square feet of space from the, what is now a kitchen to an office. And you're talking about, you know, quite a bit of moving a water line, putting in a sidewalk, removing trees, building retaining wall, all that, when we know from experience that that won't be used. People will walk through our driveway and come through the property as they have and continue to do. And so, you know, we just don't, don't see that, that, you know, the other proposals were a lot more dramatic in terms of development and that those could carry that cost. And also, they were already in there with the grading equipment to do stuff, so it's a different analysis. And, you know, we just think that that is something that this project cannot handle. We also have questions about the exact, and I've gotten in the case like, I was done with visual filing, others, the, the amount of property that would be needed along Arnold Mill Road, the concept is, seems to be sound, but we really need to know the exact depth of that. I know the state is 17 feet, but that's, that's totaled from the, I think would be from the curb, but we want to make sure of that because it wouldn't be 17 additional feet of right-of-way. And then also the vagueness of what additional contributions would be made to what other projects in the area causes me to be quite, quite concerned. So those are the elements where we are not in line with the staff, but, you know, as I said, Mr. Williamson is here, he can answer his questions about his proposal, his business. You know, I love the, representing local folks. And how many times have we talked about that the city has got live and play down and need work? And this guy's got a business with employees, 40-something employees, and as you said, they are all, I don't even want to, no, to throw the term out, I can't remember, I can't remember what generation we're supposed to be talking about, but they're the younger generation that Uber eats all a lot, and so they do take advantage of the restaurants down there. So that is exactly what the city, you know, desires to have in the downtown environment. If Bentley Parkway, we get the sidewalk improvement for something that, that number one was absorbed as part of the larger project, it'd make more sense. Number two, if we thought it would really be used, it could be a different element, but the fact that the path of least resistance, it would need to go through our property so easier grade change, more, you know, attractive walk, and is the way people walk right now. They're glad to answer the question you have.
So I have a question to the applicant. Did the applicant purchase the property understanding the existing conditions?
He did, he did not. They were, candidly, they are in the city records, but he did not, was not informed of them by the seller. But he did not, was not informed of them by the seller of those conditions.
Sounds like a legal issue to me.
Anyone else?
Mr. Williamson would like to add further to that. Hi, I'm Tim Williamson. I absolutely did not know the conditions. I became aware of the conditions, I believe, of Mr. Hacker.
Hey, would you state your address too?
Well, my address for this case is one oh eight Arnold Mill Road. My home address is thirty-three thirty-three Eagle Watch Drive. Proud resident of the area for twenty-five years, raised my kids. Was proud to sell my last building and purchase my next property. I thought the city would be very welcoming. It's not. I'm sorry to say that. I'm in a good position where I need to expand and outgrown what we have. Looking at this, at this drawing, we did all of that, all of that. I've done the planning for the four thousand square foot building. The budget, my initial budget going in, I had saved six hundred thousand dollars in cash to do this during COVID. The budget is going to be closer to probably seventy-fifty by the time you have that. The city's asked is twenty-five to thirty-five percent of my budget. I can't afford it. I just simply can't afford it. So that leaves me an alternative to leave the city with my growth, not, not my people that are here now, but my future growth, to leave the city because I can't afford to do what you're asking me to do. I love it. I love the plans. I'm looking at that and listening to Katie saying, man, that sounds really grandiose. I could be the fool that has to pay for that. But that fool was me and I can't, I cannot do that and do my business. So it creates a hardship. You're, you're putting a hardship on me that I was unaware of. I did as much due diligence as possible when I purchased it. I looked at it as, as a piece of property that's significant to Woodstock. And I've treated it that way. And my future plans for it are to respect the heritage. And as people drive by and walk through and look at it, man, this place is nice. I want to eat a trophy for Woodstock. Right now with that kitchen up there, that's ugly. The neighbors support us a hundred percent. As far as I know, everybody I've met. It's, it's just with these restrictions, it has, I mean, honestly, it has nothing to do with us. Bentley Parkway, I could end that Bentley Parkway discussion in my mind by putting a gate up. Then we wouldn't use access. We have a half a dozen people use that entrance during the day. Do not cause congestion. But I'd be willing to put up a, a firegate if that solves that. But to put a sidewalk up and to, and to put a turn lane in has nothing to do with us, except for the regulations and the restrictions the city has put. The prior project would play, and I know you folks all know the, the history of it and all that other kind of stuff. But, but he was figuring on burying, my brain went asleep about an hour. He was, he was figuring on about a five million dollar project. So, so burying two hundred thousand, that's a small piece. But when you're looking at six to seven hundred thousand and you're trying to bury two hundred and it's in cash, got a different, got a different proposition and it doesn't seem like it's a reasonable ask. I'm willing to do something. But how about on a, on an equal percentage of what the former agreement was based on my budget? I'm making a very low impact project. I need four thousand square feet for my employees. It's a low impact. It's going to affect nobody. But yet the city needs two hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements. You may do that. It's not reasonable. I'll be reasonable, but I can't afford it. It's, it wasn't known, it wasn't exposed to me. Would it be illegal freedom for another hundred thousand? Sure, sure. I could probably, I could probably throw them through the parks and be happy with that. But where does it stop? I just need a little building. That's all I need. And I'll go about my business. I'll never park a commercial truck in there. You won't know we're there except we're, we're making a positive impact in the economy, employing people, letting people walk up to the restaurants. Exactly what I anticipated as we were buying the, the property. And that's what's happening. My people are getting together on Friday evening and walking up the town. They're buying their lunches. They're mid forties. I, I haven't done a head count. But we're in a growth spurt. We're, we're in a hit segment. We're in a growth spurt and I'm looking to employ more people. I cannot. In fact, I have to have people, even if it's not COVID, I have to have people out of the office because of space. We're filling up the building. I need space. And it's not real, unrealistic to ask to be able to build a four thousand square foot building and go about my business like I thought I would when I purchased it. I'm just asking for a little bit of reasonableness and, and nothing else. I'm not asking for nothing. I'm not asking to give up nothing. I just cannot afford it. It's a beautiful plan. I love that plan. I, I just can't afford it.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, sir. I got, I got one. Thank you for your time. Clearly, the, the Bentley Parkway sidewalk and streetscape and all that stuff is, what I'm looking at in the agenda packets, it was a total cost of one forty-nine, forty-nine thousand, six hundred. And then the, the turn lane, it said was dock, or estimated cost by, approximately twenty-one thousand. So it, it, given that, it's like the streetscape sidewalk, all that stuff is by far the, the bigger one out of those two. So without the requirement of the Bentley Parkway streetscape requirements, would that at all make it still feasible for you to build this building and do what you want to do here or no?
What's remain?
Without the Bentley Parkway streetscape requirement, what I'm looking at will look like to be the most expensive, what you're talking about.
I, I keep kind of breaking up. I'm not sure.
Brandon, your microphone is rubbing, so if you pull it out.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Okay. So what I was saying was it looks like the Bentley Parkway streetscape. That looks like to be, from what I'm looking at, the number I see is given by the applicant was approximately one forty-nine, six hundred. And then the turn lane or whatever is given, the approximate cost is twenty-one thousand. So I guess my question is, if the Bentley Parkway streetscape requirement, so the sidewalk, all that stuff, if that wasn't there, the one forty-nine, six hundred, would it be feasible then for you to develop without that requirement or no? Because what you're telling me now is it's not really feasible with that requirement.
Is the question, would we be willing to do the turn lane?
Basically, yeah. Just take out the requirement for the Bentley Parkway. Because the turn lane looks, I mean, it's relatively, it's, it's cheaper than, significantly cheaper than the, the streetscape. So it's just purely a question.
Yeah. As, as the owner of the property, I would agree to that. I haven't consulted parks on that. But, but if that's the concession and I can agree to that and then, and then we can move forward, I would be delighted to give you a turn.
Don't forget about the Arnold Mill Road streetscape.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was just a, a right of way.
It's a right of way dedication, but the condition as written right now also says that they would dedicate, they would make a contribution for the cost of the improvements to be debt, to be attributed to other pedestrian projects. And so if you wanted them to only do the turn lane, you would probably want to remove conditions three. And then for condition four, you could leave the right of way dedication and take out the contribution part if you wanted to do that.
Okay. I'm just purely asking questions, but that, that's good to know. And but, no, that's, that's good to know because I did miss that. But on the other part that you just said, was there a dollar figure associated with the contribution amount or no?
No, it's to be determined later. So the condition says, the contribution shall be based on an estimate of construction costs as agreed upon by both the applicant and staff. And so what we usually do is ask them to get a quote on what the construction would cost. And then we check it with our city engineer or our public works department and make sure that they agree that it's a reasonable quote or they could ask for another one. And then we would go back and forth and, and agree that way, I think is what we've done in the past.
So you're talking about the construction cost of the entire, if, if, if we built it today with, with retaining walls and?
My intention when writing this condition was not including the retaining wall, just the cost of the street, the sidewalk and the streetlights. Because the street trees had also already been relieved from the condition because there's a huge water main under the ground right there. So, so that could probably be clarified in the condition if it was actually added, you know, if that condition was recommended. But I would recommend just the cost of a ten-foot sidewalk and installation of streetlights and installation of sidewalk, but not the retaining wall. But, you know, to be honest with you, this is a vote of seven, you know, of the DPC members. And so I'm not sure that everybody shares my opinion on what that meant. So I think some clarification is in order probably if you wanted to recommend that or if they recommend that.
You mean clarification on the, the, the contribution amount for the?
Yeah. So would it be? Yeah. Would it be just the sidewalk, the cost of installing a ten-foot sidewalk anywhere on flat ground? Or would it be the cost of installing a ten-foot sidewalk there where you have to do a lot of grading and a, a wall?
What are the, what was the actual wording on that recommendation again? I'm sorry. Can you pull that up?
Um, yeah. Can you, Steve, can you go back a few slides? Through the, there, yep, there you go. It's number four. Can you see that, Brandon? Nope. Go forward one more, Steve. It's a condition number four. There you go.
Um, okay. I guess I read earlier, the city may, so that the city may install the seven-foot landscape and ten-foot sidewalk. I didn't, I missed the contribution part. I'm sorry.
Yeah. And I, as I read it, it was to contribute to another, other pedestrian projects in the area. I thought there was a specific other project that we were going to find, that we were, they were going to ask to find it or nothing. Now I realize that's, that's not really, they want us to make a contribution to their supply elsewhere. I, I, I had questions about what that contribution amount would be and what it actually puts into the bill.
Right. And so I, I think we anticipated, you know, a larger project. And so it would, I think staff meant just the basic contribution for the installation of a ten-foot wide sidewalk without the retaining wall and all that. And the other thing I just want to mention is that the, the conditional use permit for office was issued, predicated on these conditions, not necessarily on the value of the play site or the value of the play proposal, you know, what they were proposing. It was, it was really just about whether or not to grant a CUP for office in this location.
And that contribution amount per what you got written here would be based on an estimate of the construction costs and then as agreed upon by the applicant and staff, which will be at a later date, obviously, right?
Yes. And that's why the last sentence is there, like if there's a dispute, because we know that it wouldn't be set in stone by the time these conditions are enacted. So if there's a dispute, they would appear before the city council to receive a ruling on, on what should be done.
Okay. Thanks for mentioning that. I, I missed that earlier. Thank you.
That's okay. Thanks.
Can I clarify that that's a ten-foot trail?
Um, I think it is, yes. I, I need to look that up. Yeah. I think I'm pretty sure it is too.
It's not a sidewalk?
Yeah. Actually, no. Yeah. The trail is on the amphitheater side. I think it was just meant to be a sidewalk.
Okay. As long as we just have clear, I just want that clarified. Cause I have not gone back and looked up when we put all those conditions in for play.
It said sidewalk on, on the play condition because at the time ten feet was the requirement. But now if it's not a trail, seven feet is actually the requirement.
Okay. All right.
So that, this condition could be changed to a seven foot, you know, paying for the cost of a seven-foot sidewalk as, as that's what the code requires today. The ten feet came from what the code was when play was going through the process. And there, they wanted to do the ten-foot sidewalk. They were asking, you know, for that covering on it. Right. So maybe a good, you know, compromise would be paying for a, a seven-foot sidewalk installed on flat land without the cost of a retaining wall or any kind of grading, which would probably be a lot less. But I can't tell you, I know what the cost would be.
So, um, can I speak, David?
Please.
So it sounds like, um, what Brandon just sort of took apart parts and pieces of this that, and, and, and I was part of both of the previous rezoning cases. So I go pretty far back on this piece of property. It's, this will be the third time I've been involved in a case with it. So as Katie is stating, you know, of the conditional use of this was because it was going to be office. But would you, it sounds like, be agreeable to the way that Brandon took it apart, which I think sounds good as well, installing the, the left turn lane? And then the city and you come to a determination of the price of a seven-foot sidewalk, which I do agree with that, and lighting, because that is part of our required streetscape. And if those two conditions are maintained, I think that would be feasible. I'm asking you that.
Can I, can I, can I take a short break and consult with my client?
Okay. It's up to David there.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Hey, I have a, I don't know if I can ask a quick question. When, when something is sold.
Let's wait for them to.
That's a good idea.
Can y'all hear me? Mr. Hacker, I think you're on.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep. Okay. Here's, after discussing, you've given us a lot of things to think about. And, and clearly there's some fine tuning that needs to be done. What, what, what I would ask you to do is table it for thirty days, allow us to fine tune this. Rather than negotiate stuff that, that neither side is a hundred percent confident is exactly what these conditions would be and probably lead to a better, a better, more thought out decision.
Okay. So you're, so you're requesting that the, this application be tabled?
Yeah. And, and, and I mean, we've all heard this feedback from the, from y'all. And, and, and what I'd ask is to table it and allow, and give us direction to work with the staff and general guidance with, with the discussion y'all have. If that's acceptable to you. That's a motion, but.
Yeah. We have to make a motion.
Yeah. A motion. And do it, so.
Can I make one more thing?
Sure. Yeah, sir.
Okay. Without knowing what the costs of, of everything else is, but with the, with the turn lane, which I doubt very seriously, twenty-one thousand dollars is going to do that. How about if I, if I contribute a total of fifty thousand dollars to the project? And then you can either do the turn lane or I'll do the turn lane out of that fifty thousand and the balance goes to the, I, I could be losing money here and I have to.
Mr. Williams, sorry to interrupt you, but we, we've got to make a motion before we could anything. And that would really have to, I don't think we can negotiate. We're not, we're not the ones to negotiate that, that situation anyway. But what I'm, my recommendation is that, that we, we table this. And then that way you can also work with staff regarding that request. with staff regarding that request, and that could be more of a formal thing to the city so that you get, you're really clear and the staff is really clear what you're asking. I, I, I would be glad to, but we're not, we're not the ones for that.
Okay.
Do we have a motion on the, is it, I, I'm okay, is, do we have a motion on the table to, for the recommendation?
Motion to table. Second.
All right, well, let's take a vote, Brandon?
Uh, the motion is to table, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Debra?
Yes.
And then, yes, so we, 5-0, we'll table this, move it to next month, and hopefully all those details can get worked out and have a clearer picture for the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Williamson, thanks, Parks.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Let's move to the next applicant, application, CUP 052-20, Life Storage. Naiwana Ray, come on down.
Hey, good evening, planning commissioners, thanks for your time this evening, this is case, CUP number 052-20, Life Storage, next slide, please. Thank you, the applicant in this case is Life Storage, the property is located off of Tricam Road and Sycamore Lane, property is zone GC with Parkway overlay, tonight on the call with us, we have Thomas Willett, who is the project manager with Life Storage, and Jeff Edney, who is the engineer with WK Dixon, next slide, please. Here's our zoning map, so you can see the subject parcel is outlined in red, this is on the south side of Highway 92, east of Tricam Road, you can see Sycamore Lane there, the property again is zone GC with, which is general commercial with the Parkway overlay. There've been three zoning cases that we could find on this property, the property was part, was one parcel of several that was annexed and rezoned in 2006, and then in 2007, there were two cases that rezoned the property and granted a few variances, and with that, with the two cases in 2007, you can see on the zoning map how the, it's all one parcel outlined in red, but with Sycamore Lane, that don't, the right of way was.
Right away was.
As part of one of those zoning cases which split the parcel, and as well the self-storage as a use was allowed in one of those 2007 cases, and I'll point out that the Parkway overlay only touches on the northern part of the parcel, but the 2006 case, one of the conditions, applied the architecture standards from the Parkway overlay to the entire parcel. Next slide, please. Thank you, you can see here the concept plan, the applicant in this case is requesting two conditional use permits, the first one is a conditional use permit to add a 43,200 square foot self-storage building, there is an existing Life Storage building, you can see that, that's the building to the left on the site plan, and they are proposing the building on the right, they could probably give you a little more statistics, but the information they've provided to us is that the existing facility is 94% occupied, so there's a market for it in this area for storage. A second conditional use permit request is for a storage yard in order to allow 12 RV parking spaces, and that use in our use chart is defined as an unroofed area for storing goods, merchandise, and vehicles in the same place for 24 more hours, so again, the conditional use there is for a storage yard, they're proposing a three-story building with the architecture that would match the existing building. Next slide. Here's a view of the subject parcel from kind of the bend in the road where you come out to Sycamore from Tricam at that light, so you can see the existing Life Storage building and then the, the vacant site right now where they're proposing the addition, additional building. Next slide, please. So you know, we take a look at certain criteria when we're evaluating conditional use permits, so I'll just touch on a few of those, the staff, as we were evaluating this, we looked at whether the use is compatible with the surrounding area, the adjacent properties primarily are zoned general commercial, so that really allows a wide array of commercial uses, retail office, and this would be expanding an existing business, this, again, this use was allowed in a previous zoning case, as far as quiet enjoyment goes, all of the storage will be contained inside the building, there's an existing dumpster location, which is, you can see it on the site plan, it's a little hard to see, I know, but it is currently to the back of the existing building, closer to Walmart, and as far as we know, we haven't received any kind of, we haven't heard any complaints from neighbors regarding noise at the facility. As far as landscaping goes, the applicant is leaving a lot of the existing buffer and parcel as is, so there will still be a nice buffer which will help with noise. As far as parking and traffic goes, the RV parking that they're proposing, it is 12 spaces designated, at the right side of the site plan, there's 12 parking spaces that are a lot longer than your average parking space, and those will be designated for RV spaces, again, right of way was donated with a previous zoning case for Sycamore Lane, and so there's a, a traffic light at Tricam and Sycamore, so I think as far as traffic flow goes, that should not be a problem, the hours of the business will stay the same as the existing, those are outlined in the staff report, but no recommendation to change those, there's an appropriate transition with landscaping, again, there's a large buffer that you can see between the commercial Walmart parcel to the rear of the property and then also to the south, and then looking at the comprehensive plan, this community, this is Community Village Center, which is a mix of retail office and services and employment to serve neighborhood youths, neighborhood needs, and as we talked about with self-service or self-storage, apologize, that's a neighborhood use, people don't travel generally too far for self-storage. So, we can go to the next slide, please, Steve. Thank you. The slide, we've got the recommendation here, Development Process Committee voted to recommend approval of the two conditional use permits, self-storage and storage yard for outdoor vehicle storage, with the following conditions, number one, the site plan shall be, the site shall be generally improved as shown on the site plan, the proposed landscaping along Sycamore Lane in front of the new building shall be generally as shown on the site plan, and shall include a six-foot black ornamental fence along the front of the new building, and then chain link fencing should only be allowed at the south end of the RV parking and along the rear of the building, they've called that out in a certain, in a few places specifically on the site plan. Condition three, the RV parking shall only be allowed in designated spaces as shown on the site plan. Next slide, please. Condition four, the architecture shall generally match the existing self-storage building, and you can see the renderings here, the picture at the bottom left is the proposed rendering of the building situated next to the existing building, and then the images on the right are the elevations that were provided by the architect, and then condition number five is just addressing some of the previous zoning case conditions, we did a review of those, and these were the three that we called out that we felt were still relevant to the subject property in this case, so the Parkway overlay, Parkway overlay architecture standard shall apply to the entire parcel, waiving the front setback where the parcel fronts Sycamore Lane, and then waiving the buffer requirement between commercial properties. And the next slide just shows a combined listing of all the recommendations, so if you want to pull that up, Steve, just so they can see that. So that concludes my presentation, I'm available for questions, and I'll remind you that Mr. Willett and Mr. Edney are on the line as well.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, the, does the zoning for the other one allow outdoor storage right now, the, the existing building?
I believe it's just for self-storage, I don't believe it's outdoor storage.
Looks like there were some RVs parked in it now.
I do think they, they have some vehicles stored by, in the gated area.
Okay. Is that, do we generally allow outdoor storage on self-storage units, have we done that in past signings?
I would ask Katie or Brantley if they're aware, I can't recall from any previous that I've been a part of.
That's it. That's all right, that's, that's okay, I think, that's all I have, that's the only questions I have, anybody else for staff, for Naiwana?
Hey, David?
Yes.
Hey, you asked about outdoor storage, typically, most of the last few projects we've had like this, we have not allowed outdoor storage because everything's been, you know, climatized, self-contained, I'd say in this case, it was a little, approached a little bit differently just because of the site, the location, some of the features incorporated into the, kind of what's been done before, so a little bit different kind of case, I think, in this situation, so we looked at it, we looked at it a little bit differently, but typically that has not been allowed, outdoor storage.
Gotcha, that's what I, I was curious, just because most of those units have also been on 92 with, with high exposure, I guess, more exposure.
Yes, thank you, I failed to mention that during my presentation, but that was one of the things that staff talked about when we were discussing our recommendation, was that, you know, it is an existing building, but it's set back off of Tricam, you know, it fronts Sycamore Lane, it doesn't front on Highway 92 or another, you know, major thoroughfare like we've seen with some of the other, the other recent self-storage cases, so I think staff generally felt comfortable with allowing not only the additional self-storage building, but also the storage outdoors for the, for the recreational vehicles, for those reasons.
Gotcha. Okay, anybody else for staff? No, then we'll move on to the applicant.
Um, I don't really have anything to add, I mean, here for questions, I really do appreciate you guys, you know, time and sticking around and your efforts there with the town, so, but I think Naiwana covered most of it, but I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any, I'm sure Tom as well.
I concur with Jeff's comments, and just to add that we're adding landscaping along the, I guess it'd be the west side to screen what's building and the parking area, and with the topography there, the parking area is going to be in a lower location so that between the topography and the landscaping, it will very be highly visible parking spaces.
Okay, thank you, anybody, any questions for the applicant? With that said, we'll close and open it up for a public hearing. Anybody online to speak from the public? With that, no going once, twice, nobody, so we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a, what's your desire? We have a motion.
Motion to approve, staff recommendation.
You have a motion to approve, approved from Renee? Second?
Second.
You have a second from Brandon? All right, all in favor, Renee, what's your?
Yes.
Yes, Brandon?
Yes.
Debra?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it's 5-0, approves, good luck with the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to sign waivers, we have a Holbrook Woodstock sign waiver, Dakota, welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone, can y'all hear me okay?
Good afternoon, what part of the world are you in?
Nighttime, I'm sorry, it is nighttime, right. Okay, let me see, I can move this, perfect, okay, the Holbrook sign waiver, if you'll go to the next slide for me, please, Steve? Thank you, so this is the Holbrook Woodstock Developments and Active Adult Senior Living Community, this is over here, it's 13682 Highway 92, Zone General Commercial with Parkway Overlay, and if you'll go to the next slide for me, Steve? Holbrook has come to us with the sign package for the whole development, and if you remember this development and have seen it recently, it's quite large and covers a long portion running along Highway 92, so they approached us with their entire package, including all the signs they have even, including campus signage, incidental signage, and then all that you see here, their monument signs, so I'm gonna kind of go through step by step, they're requesting three waivers, or three, a waiver from three different code sections in total, and these are all related to the, the monument signage, you can see here a little bit on the bottom right photo, kind of an all encompassing sign location plan that shows each of them and where they will be located on the property, and then I did put this entire sign package in the, in the agenda for you as well, if you want to look back at it a little bit closer. So, for the first code section, this is 6.4.4B, this says the monument signs shall be limited to one sign per parcel per street frontage, and where a parcel has street frontage on more than one street, a monument shine, sign shall be allowed at each street frontage. So, here, at this development, they do have three different parcels, and those are outlined there in black, three different parcels, and they do have multiple street frontages, but the issue here is that the, each monument sign is not located in the proper place, so for them to have met this code section, they would have had to put one on that first left parcel on Mountain Brook, which they have, and then one on the first parcel fronting Highway 92, and then one on the second parcel over on Mountain Brook, and one on Highway 92 at the front. So, as you can see, there's just a little bit of a different placement here, staff does understand this because, like I said, of the long Highway 92 frontage, and because of the, the kind of unusual configuration of how these parcels are separated. Okay, moving on to the next slide, please. Okay, this is also 6.4.4, it is C, says that no monument sign shall be erected to a height greater than 12 feet for multi, multi-tenant properties, so they are requesting one of these monument signs to be above that 12 feet, it is 13.5 feet, so not too far over, but this is their sign that is fronting Highway 92, it's kind of a sign, as you can see on the location, that separates one part of the development from another, so it's, I believe it's the assisted living portion and the portion where they have cottages, it's meant to be kind of directional, but also to be seen from Highway 92. Okay, and then to the third request, the next slide, please. Thank you, and this is 6.4.4D, and this says, all monument signs are required to have a distinct supporting base upon which the monument sign is affixed, the supporting base shall be no less than 18 inches in height, and then it shall be constructed decorative masonry or cementitious materials. So, when the applicant first approached us, all of these signs actually looked like this 13.5 square foot sign where they did not have a brick base at the bottom, we did discuss this with them at DPC to see if they would be willing to add these brick portions at the bottom that are required by the code, brick or stone, or cementitious materials, as the code says, they did work with us on this and agreed to, for three of the monument signs, add this, this portion at the bottom, so they did leave it out on the 13.5 square foot sign, but we did kind of. So, they did leave it out on the 13.5 square foot sign, but we did kind of discuss that that sign or that base may not necessarily be seen from Highway 92, whereas these other three signs would be seen from the road frontages. So, they worked that out with us, but one of the things for the other three signs is that the sign base that they did add only comes in at 12 inches instead of 18. So, they would need a waiver for this, this section as well. Okay, and that is all of the three requests. I'm going to move on and talk a little bit about the waiver criteria on the next slide. Thank you. And so, we have these four criteria that we go by for the sign waiver process. Number one is if the sign is visually compatible with the character of the surrounding area. This is the only question that was answered no on. This is due to the fact that the neighboring or the neighborhoods nearby do have full stone monument signs. This is, I believe, Mountain Brook and, there we go, the Woodlands and Lifetime Fitness. These are all neighboring residential and commercial properties. They all do have full entire stone signs. So, that was the answer on this. On every other criteria, though, they did meet and come in with the yes. We do feel that all the signs are necessary and meet the, the size of the subject premises, the site, and we, we do feel like feel like it's kind of moving towards the city standards as we did talk that over with them. One more thing I wanted to point out, and this says it in question four, is that the other Holbrook sites in Georgia, I believe they showed me Decatur and Acworth, I want to say, they do have signs that are, that are similar to these as well. So, this is kind of a universal sign package that they bring forward at all of their Holbrook locations. Okay, and last slide. Thank you. So, the DPC did vote to recommend approval, and this is of all three of the waiver requests with no conditions. Does anyone have any questions? And then I can give it over to Davis Hunt. He is with Holbrook.
Hey, Dakota. Thanks. Thanks for doing this or your work in this. Just to clarify, on the very first one about the one sign per parcel, the very first part of this waiver. So, if I'm looking at this correctly, there's three parcels there. The reason they need this is because they have those two signs on, on the main road there in that, that middle parcel, correct?
Right.
If that one sign was over just like a few feet in that third parcel, they wouldn't even need to request that, that part of the waiver. Is that correct or no?
Well, there are in the middle parcel, and we may be able to go back to it, in the middle parcel, there are three signs on the front of Highway 92. And so, they would need one sign on the front of 92 at that first parcel, and then one of the signs at the front of 92 on the third.
Same, yeah. Okay, I see what you're saying. Still the same question. Theoretically, if those signs were in those parcels, it wouldn't even be a waiver.
Yes, that's correct.
For that portion at least of the request. Okay. And then, I'm sorry, for that last part about the, the base, can you go over that just one more time real quick? I'm trying to track on that, but I couldn't follow.
If you will go down for me, Steve, two slides. Yeah, so, and I'll go over a little bit of the signs, a little bit more in detail. So, you have that 13.5 square foot. And then there are two signs that are identical that are in the rendering on the top. Two of those signs are at the entrance of Highway 92. And then that third bottom sign is on the Mountain Brook side. So, these two signs on the right side, they do have a stone base on them, which is something that would meet the code. They are just 12 inches instead of 18 inches as it's required by code. And then for the 13.5 square foot sign, they do not have any, any stone or brick or decorative masonry, anything that's required by code. So, those are kind of split up between the signs. It does get a little bit confusing.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
First of all, I couldn't see the last item. I don't, I think you may have skipped it on your next to last slide. Unusual circumstances. That, so, do unusual circum, we didn't read that.
Uh, yeah, this is where I was saying, we do believe that unusual circumstances exist just based on the layout of the site, the fact that this is a sign package that they recommend at all Holbrook locations and that they have worked with staff to move closer to the code.
Okay, so. All right. I'll ask the applicant on my next.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? And let's move on to the applicant, please.
All right. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Well, thank you for considering a waiver here. We're really excited to be in Woodstock and have been throughout this whole process. The city's been wonderful to work with, and I think the project is going to be something that the whole, whole community of Woodstock can be proud of. Signage is critical to the success of our business. We get probably 50 to 55% of our move-in traffic is from drive-bys. So, visibility of Highway 92, which is one of the main reasons we chose that site in Woodstock, is the, the traffic count on Highway 92. And so, having visibility is crucial to us for that drive-by traffic. This is a difficult site to have the kind of a simplified signage plan because it's very difficult to have a perpendicular sign to 92 the way our site is configured and have visibility. And so, what we've done is we've, as Dakota, so perfectly illustrated was we have a sign at each entrance off, off of a road. And then just due to the nature of the way the parcels were divided there, we're not asking for an increase in, in signs per, what we would be allowed if we put a sign on each of those parcels, but just to kind of reconfigure the location so that they're symmetrical, they flank the entrance to, off Highway 92, for example. If we had to put one in that other parcel, it would look very strange not to be consistent or uniform with the, with the signage that the other side would represent. And then the sign that kind of demarks the, the change over from our, our, our offering types, from independent living to the cottage, that sign just kind of ties that section of the community to the Holbrook in general. And that's, it's pretty far back off of Highway 92 there. It's, it's well back, well behind our property line there. So, it's, it's a lot less visible. That's the reason we opted to go with a little bit more kind of sophisticated look in campus for that side. I don't believe you'll be able to see the base at all from 92. It's up pretty high, and you'll just see the sign itself. And the base is pretty small anyway. So, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but again, signage is, is critical to the success of our project.
And any questions for the applicant?
I have a question.
Okay.
Why does the interior sign need to be 13 and a half feet?
Mainly for visibility because it's, it's pretty far back. We need a sign that grabs your attention as you drive by, and, and it just simply gets our name up high enough where you can see it off 92. If you drive down 92, it's, it's, you can see the location of the sign, and you can see that it's pretty far back. So, it needs to be a little bit taller, we think. 13 and a half feet, I'm not real sure if that's a special number or not. If we, I don't know. It, it kind of seemed to fit for the scale as we looked at how we're designing the package. In front of the signage package, you'll see about probably 10 or 12 revisions that we've been working on the signage package since March to try to get it right. And, and really looked at how we're, the visibility off 92. So, 13 and a half feet probably came out of the generation of where we were and where we started to where we are now.
I drove by the site today, and I know that the topography, I believe, if I, it goes up.
It does.
So, I don't understand that that's a hardship. So, it's also, if it's on the interior of the campus, I don't see that. I see that as more directional, not something that is necessary to attract attention from Highway 92. That's my personal opinion, but I wanted to ask you that question.
Well, we see it as a way to tie the cottage community into the rest of the community. It kind of is the demarcation of the difference between product types there, and it, it gives a little bit of identity to the cottages as you ride by. Otherwise, you would just see the signs at entrance to 92, and as you rode further back or further to the east, or if you came from the east and went to the west, you would, you would see that cottage development without any signage whatsoever. And that's why that's, the purpose of that sign is.
I still, I'm not seeing a just demarcation of the hardship or a variance on the height. So, that's just my comment.
All right.
Hi, Mr. Hunt. Brandon Williams. The, a long, kind of similar question for the, for the other request, for the, I believe your other side is a 12-inch base instead of the, what I'm, I guess it's supposed to be 18 inches. Is that, was that just by design, or what was the, kind of the reasoning for that, or?
It was to try to keep the sign in scale with the columns and the fence that it's going to, that it will kind of be in between. The fence actually attaches to the sign on both sides. So, it's trying to keep the scale of the sign with, within the scale of the fence and the, and the two columns on each side.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you.
And Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion to deny the 13 and a half foot variance and accept the 12-inch base variance and accept the one additional sign in the locations indicated.
Does that cover it properly, Dakota?
It does, yes.
Okay. We have a motion?
I don't know. If you want to offer friendly amendment, is this where you do this or no?
Yes.
Okay. Would you be willing, Renee, to only approve the, the first part, just the four signs, and not the 12-inch base?
Sure.
So, just approve the four signs and not the last two requests, if that makes sense? Okay.
I accept your friendly amendment.
Okay, we have a motion and a friendly amendment. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Matt, second. We have a motion, friendly amendment, and a second. We have a vote. Renee?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
And I vote no. So, there we, it passed four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Sam's Club sign waiver.
Yes. All right. Thank you. If you'll go to the next slide, please, Steve. Great. So, this sign waiver request is over at the corner of Main Street and Highway 92. This is actually for panel replacements for two existing signs. One is located on Highway 92. One is over on Main Street. This is for the shopping center of Sam's Club. It is just the Sam's Club panels that go on those whole entire existing monument signs. And this area is downtown and commercial makes use. And then on the next slide, I will show you some of these signs. So, I know I fit a lot of signs on this slide here. I apologize. I hope that you can all see them well enough, just kind of to give you a, a drive-by view. This is something that the applicant provided of what the sign looks like now and what the sign would look like. This is from going and coming in each direction, both on the sign on Main Street and the sign on Highway 92. This, this variance or this waiver, I'm sorry, it is only for, they would be allowed to have a panel replacement here, the same size, but this is because they are requesting electronic signage. And as we've heard before, electronic signage is only permitted in the, on commercially zone property within the Parkway Overlay District. And then there's some other court requirements as well. This is in the downtown district that we're out of. I think I'm echoing somewhere. Okay, so I will show you now. We can go on to the next slide. That is basically it. We'll go kind of through these criteria again. So, the first, number one, are the proposed signs visually compatible with the character of the surrounding area? There are no other electronic signs in the area. As far as I know, we have not approved any, any requests for any electronic sign out of the Parkway Overlay District where they're permitted by our code. We have been pretty strict so far on that going forward, and this, again, is particularly in the downtown district. And then number two, are this, are the signs of a consistent size and scale to the existing signs in the area? This question is a little bit tough because the current sign is legally non-conforming. The current sign is much larger than what would be allowed today. Today in our code, we are allowing monument signs up to 12 feet tall for multi-tenant properties. The sign is around, both of these signs, they gave me an estimate on the entire sign, is around 47 feet tall. And then the panel itself, the entire panel, including that electronic portion, is 95.8 square feet. So, it is much larger than what the code allows now, but there are other signs in the surrounding area that are of this size. There are a lot of non-conforming things kind of, kind of in this passage here. Okay, and then number three, are the proposed signs reasonably scaled to the size of the subject's structure? Technically, yes, if we're just looking at the panel and we are looking at the electronic sign that is being proposed on the panel, just a general panel replacement would be permitted. But that electronic portion does come in under 20% of the overall panel size, which is another one of those requirements from the electronic sign code. And then number four, do unusual circumstances exist? We did not find any here. I think most, the applicant would say would kind of be relating to content. So, beyond that, we did not find any unusual circumstances. Okay, if you'll move on to the next slide for me. And this is our recommendation. Staff did vote to recommend denial. We have voted denial in the past for the reason of this just electronic signage being out of character. We want to fit in these specific character areas. We've all discussed multiple times electronic signage in the areas that it belongs, in the areas that we do not want it currently. Downtown specifically is one of those places, and unfortunately, this is a downtown district. Then I do want to point out this code section here, 6.7.4 states that a non-conforming sign shall not be replaced by another non-conforming sign. This would be doing that. And then that is all I have. We do have our applicant here, and I'm sure she may like to say some words. That is Carrie Little.
Hi. Yes, just to reiterate, we're, we're wanting to add the LED sign to the existing structure. Again, we won't be adding any square footage. It will be absorbed in the square footage that we already have. Walmart seems, thinks that the LED pricers necessarily, in order to show that the people on the, on the roads like Alabama Avenue will be able to see their pricers because the fuel station is on the interior of that property. It is a little bit harder to see that they have the fuel station. And that's what they're trying to do is attract people to the interior part of their property to buy the fuel.
Any, any question? Did you have any further comments or any questions for the applicant? Matt? Well, thank you. Well, thank you, Mrs. Little. And let us, I guess, do we have a motion from the commission?
Make a motion to follow staff's recommendation of denial.
We have a motion?
Second.
And second, all right. Renee, what's your pleasure?
No. No, I approve the denial.
Yes. You approved it, you're going yes for the notion.
Yes, for the notion. Sorry.
Matt?
Yes, for the no.
Deborah?
Yes, for the no.
And Brandon?
Yes, yes, for the no, I guess.
Yes. That's 5-0 with yes for the no. And thank you, Miss Little. You can go to the, make your request to counsel. So we're going to move on finally to informational item. Katie, are you still with us? AV for architecture. What's AV stand for?
I am so sorry, having problems with my muting. Just a minute. Administrative variance for architecture is AV for architecture. And here is the presentation. So sorry about that, guys. Okay. Thank you. Can you hear me and see me?
We see you and hear you.
Okay. It's gotten darker in my house all of a sudden. Turned off one of the lights. Okay, so let's see. Next slide, please. This is an informational presentation to you today. We are going, we have already made an informational presentation to the city council about this proposed ordinance change. And we are going to the city council on September 14th for approval for this. So this is the code section currently. It is 10.140. We are proposing to amend this section to allow additional administrative variances to be handled by staff for architecture in the downtown district. So right now, the, we can review applications for administrative variances for a reduction of parking spaces up to 20%, a reduction of buffers and setbacks up to 20%, tree and landscaping requirements, relocation of fences, allowing false windows, which actually is an architecture-related administrative variance. And then to allow sign increases, parking on only one side of D2 streets, and some form-based code items and parking surface. So these are the, this is the total list of everything that staff is allowed to vary administratively at the moment. So we do need to make a change to this code section in general just to kind of solidify all these items and put them in a better list because the code section as it stands right now is a little bit messy. The code section also says that administrative variances shall not add on to existing variances and that the DPC can approve, deny, or forward to PC to the planning commission. And also, we provide an update to mayor and council every six months as a practice of all the administrative variances that we grant as a staff. So, for example, the last update, we only had one, and it was for false windows on the facade of one of the Aiden Park buildings on the side facade because they had some stairs or something in the way. So this is something that we need to update already. So next slide, please. All right. So the main issue that we're facing right now, over time, you guys have seen a variety of architectural variance requests for the downtown district. Sometimes they're coupled with zoning requests or related to entire neighborhoods of buildings or specific structures. These kinds of requests have more of an effect on the community and should be decided through the regular public hearing process, especially when it relates to a whole entire neighborhood or a really special building in Woodstock. Sometimes the variances, though, are small details that are only, the only one thing holding back a house permit approval. And that would probably not be noticed by the layperson or maybe would not produce strange results on a large scale. So a lot of the time, you guys don't necessarily see the variance requests when it's just for one architectural subsection because usually it's such a, you know, the three-month public hearing process is a pretty long process to go through just for one minor detail. So usually the applicant will just change whatever they're trying to do in order to conform with the code. So, but these types of requests are going to become more cumbersome. We're going to keep having them as the city grows. And they often, you know, especially for the residential ones, they often only affect the owner who's commissioned the building or who's choosing to purchase the house. Next slide, please. So here are a couple of examples of situations where an administrative variance at the staff level maybe could have made sense or maybe not. So one example here is the Chick-fil-A building on, I think this was for the building on Highway 92. They got a variance to storefront treatment to allow the knee wall to come all the way up to 40 inches when the code says it has to be a maximum of 24 inches. And they wanted this to have like a modesty panel at the, so when people are sitting inside the restaurant, you can't see their feet and legs and stuff like that. So this is a pretty minor thing that probably the average person would not even notice. And if we could have handled that at the staff level, it could have kept Chick-fil-A out of the three-month public hearing process for something that we were pretty sure was going to be approved. On the other hand, Mad Life got a variance to allow roll-up doors instead of storefront treatment for patio access. And this also had a really good result. But in order to do this, they had to get a variance from all of the storefront treatment definition, which has 15 subsections. So you might remember storefront treatment has the display windows and the transom windows and just a whole lot of other details that they needed to get a variance for to do this. And so that, you know, this was an appropriate variance for the use that they're doing, but it probably would have been something maybe a little higher than the staff level. Next slide, please. Couple more examples of a situation where it could have made sense. You guys probably remember these two zoning, or these two variance requests for Dobbs Road and Melanie Lane for these two single-family houses. They needed a variance to the build-to line because they were trying to save trees in the front yard. So they needed to be pushed back further. And that's a variance to a setback that probably should have been a public hearing as it was because it's a pretty big difference. But another thing they needed was a variance to 30% windows on the side, with the sides being pretty far away from the road in this case, and a variance to fence height for the northern house for the fence around their pool, I think. And so those are two code sections that are pretty minor that could potentially have been appropriate for staff to relieve them at the staff level. Next slide, please. All right, and then here's another one. This is 28 and Mill, the Trayton Homes neighborhood on Mill Street and Payden Street. They have this design where they've got the front door kind of between two levels. And this is something that we've seen in other places, too. For the 28 and Mill, these are the, this is the building that fronts right on the trail. And they had some windows kind of down in wells for the level below. But they wanted the front door to be at trail level. And so that was a really good reason. Sometimes the reason for this is just because they, that's how they want to design every building, like in Haddonstone, the entire development got a variance for this. But at 28 and Mill, it was really related to the topography and the way that the trail met the property. And so in that case, that is something that probably would have been appropriate to vary at the staff level. And it would have been really surprising if you guys would have voted for denial on that one. So these are the types of requests that, talking about maybe being able to give staff the ability of the DPC to vote and keep these out of the public hearing process. Next slide, please. All right, so we are proposing this to reduce our workload and yours by increasing the powers of the DPC to approve more downtown architecture-related requests administratively. So one of the things that we'd like feedback from you on, and we got feedback from the council on already, was, you know, where should this apply? How many buildings? How many powers? How many code sections? So we are proposing it for both residential and commercial, but for only one building at a time. So that means it wouldn't be a variance for the whole neighborhood like Haddonstone. If they want to do a different design that's different from our code for an entire development, that really should go through the public hearing process. And it would be wise to limit the power like we do with the 20% for setbacks. So the way to limit this that we've come up with is to allow this only for two subsections max. So if they need a variance to any more than two subsections, then they would go through the full public hearing process. We are thinking about allowing this for the code sections, 7.729, 7.730, number one, which is the building requirements, and then residential treatment and storefront treatment, each of which have various subsections. So we're proposing maximum two subsections per building and only one building at a time. And next slide, please. I think I just have a couple more. So the next three slides are just the code sections that we're talking about, but super shortened so you can see exactly which things we're talking about, being able to handle administratively. This is the 7.729, so it's the regular architectural code section. And it also requires adherence to the building facade and material requirements table. Next slide, please. This next one is the 7.730, number one, building requirements. We probably, staff would probably choose not to vary these top ones because they're kind of major. But I'm thinking for G and H. There may be some situation where we don't need a parapet wall all the way around all sides of the building or with this rear decks and porches section, we're thinking about making this more specific anyway because we found that we're having an issue with the phrase. Visible from, because that, you know, that's really subjective. And so I think that we're going to reward that eventually to make it talk about, you know, what it's adjacent to rather than what it's visible from. But this would be another sections. In the meantime, we could handle administrative variance or in situations where it doesn't make sense. And then over here is architectural treatment with its five subsections. So they would only be able to ask for two of these, you know, at our max two subsection limit. Next slide, please. This last slide is storefront treatment. So they'd be able to ask for a maximum of two code sections or subsections, excuse me. So I would consider that like subsection two, but also if, you know, 3C, that's one subsection. 3D is a different subsection. So I think that's my last slide of this presentation. Can you check, Steve?
So why the limit on two? Is that something that other jurisdictions do?
No, it's actually based on our own, our own code and our own limits. So right now in the administrative variance, we can vary setbacks, but only up to 20% of the setback. So anything over 20% should be considered, you know, a bigger variance, and that should go to the city council. So the point is, you know, if staff should have the power to vary absolutely anything, then what, then what's the point of the public hearing process? I mean, we all know the point, but, you know, so the point is to keep it limited. So staff is only approving things that are minor in nature.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? So I don't know if other jurisdictions do it, but probably Bradley might know that answer. I know that we do it in our other variances.
Got you.
I have a question.
Yes.
So these items that y'all administratively grant variances to, are they documented in any way that is still available to the public?
Yes, so they're not on our website where you can just go and get them, but they would definitely be available if the public requested them, certainly. And they are shown to the public every six months when we present them to the council. So usually during that presentation, I'll have like a spreadsheet that we show to the council, and it has each administrative variance that was granted in the last six months, who it was granted to, what it was for. And the purpose of that is, you know, for council to give the staff this kind of power to approve certain things. You know, if at any point they think that we are approving too much or that, you know, we're approving things that really should be going through public hearings, they'd have an opportunity to address that as I present it to them every six months.
And it would be after the fact?
Yes. So after the fact, if they would think we're approving too much, then, you know, we could revise the administrative variance powers. That's right. So that's another good reason, though, to make it limited because, you know, it would just be a staff decision until, and, you know, period. And then we are just reporting it to the mayor and council so that they could change our process if they wanted to.
My biggest concern is that it's accessible to the public, so.
Like you would want it to be more accessible to the public?
Just if somebody does a search on a zoning case, I want that to pop right up. So I don't know if that does.
We can find a way to do that. So we do, we have zoning cases listed on our website. You know, we list the planning commission cases. So we could list administrative variances there or make a separate page for administrative variances.
Yeah, I just feel like if I'm, example, if I'm looking to buy a property in downtown Woodstock that has existing conditions on it, I want to type in that parcel number, and I want to know every zoning case attached to that, and I want to know every criteria that was part of that.
Now, if someone makes a request to us for, it's called a tier-two zoning certification letter is the instrument that would reveal that information. And it's available to anyone who asks for it. You do have to pay for it because it's a document that we're creating rather than open records. It's just pulling records that we already have. But with a zoning letter, it's a letter that we create, that we've done the research on the property. These are the zoning ordinances that exist and whatnot. So even today, there's not really a website you can go to and just pull up all the history on the property. I mean, that's why people have to do diligence. But part of regular due diligence would be contacting the city and asking. That's all anyone would have to do because we can easily look up those records.
Okay, so these administrative variances would be incorporated into that type of a document.
Oh, yes, yeah. So if somebody was searching, and, you know, we, I think one idea that can help with this is like what we do right now with our regular zoning ordinance is we have them in a GIS layer. So when we click on a parcel, like in our internal GIS, we can, the zoning comes up on the parcel. So we actually don't have administrative variances on that list right now, but we can, we need to put those on there.
Again, just to access to the public of all the information.
Certainly. Any other comments or suggestions? That was great, Renee, thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Actually, you don't have to vote because it's just informational. That's why you went straight to all in favor.
Yes.
Sorry.
Hey, Katie?
Yes.
There's a typo in the last section of this page that I'm looking at right now.
Oh, display windows, mon eight.
Yeah.
I think it was meant to be minimum, yep. I will think.
Okay, what's a mon?
Not a thing. You are right.
Well, thank you so much, Katie. Anybody else have any questions or comments? I like empowering you guys. I probably would lean more towards more than two because different things pop up, but whatever you feel comfortable with.
Well, I'll note that. Does anybody else feel that way?
Particularly, there are so many, you know, but if you're basing it on 20%, the 20% rule or whatever, maybe 20% of the items.
Oh, that's interesting. I don't know what, how many that would be, but I will look and count the subsections there are and try to figure it out. Because really, two is just like, kind of out of nowhere. It's not really based on anything. It's just like, what is a smallish number? You know? And thinking about like all the times that we review so many house plans. And like I said, most of the time, the person making the plans will just make the change because it's like too much to go through the whole public hearing process to have a door face a different way or something like that. That's one of our code sections is that the pedestrian entrance has to face the street and rather than be perpendicular. So if you have one of those houses where you have like a foyer and you enter from the side, but it's still in the front of the house, that won't be allowed. So, you know, that's just one. I think there was a plan I reviewed that had that issue. And then like a window was a different size than the other ones. And residential treatment says that all the windows on the front have to be equally sized. So that's also really specific. But in this case, the window was like in the middle of a stairwell or something. Like it was a pretty good reason. So, you know, in that case, there were only two subsections. And but, you know, I will look at what 20% of the number is. That's an interesting idea. Have to see if it's way too many.
Okay.
Because it's also true that not every one of these code sections applies to every single building either. You know, there's a lot of code sections in here that are like a little redundant or would only apply to something really specific, like retail buildings have to have that two-foot-deep display area. So like that code section only applies to commercial retail buildings with storefront treatment in downtown district. So that's like. So that's like, pretty specific.
And this doesn't apply to, does this apply to signs as well?
No. Just architecture.
Got you. Well, architecture, I mean, signs have a certain, certain architecture about them as well.
Well, that's true. And actually, we do allow administrative waivers for signs up to, from one of these slides, I think up to 25%.
25%, which got caught my eye.
That's fun.
That's in the sign code when I, I was searching administrative variance in the, in the code, and that one came up, and I didn't remember that, that was in there, but it is.
That was something we just recently did, by the way, on our last sign code update.
That's why I don't remember it. Thanks to God.
And I think it's just 25% for, for the size specifically.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other announcements or anything? Comments, anybody?
I'll make one more announcement about the Smart Woodstock project. Today, we had our final presentation for that project, and it was a one-hour-long, very, very long webinar that Georgia Tech hosted, and it's going to be posted on their website, so you guys can watch that later if you weren't able to see it today. And so we are wrapping up that project and plan to have the final deliverable within, like by the end of the month, the end of September.
Fantastic.
There's Brantley.
Just a general question real quick. Does anybody, does anybody know if or when are we, are we going to start meeting in person again, or has that come up at all, or no, or?
I can.
Just purely curious.
See, I can address that. We've gone to more of an in-person, less hybrid, more of an in-person meeting with council, whereas, you know, now we're hosting the meeting on Zoom with a little in-person presence. The council meetings have gone to more of a live meeting with the Zoom as being a kind of a component to that. So, you know, we've talked to IT and need to have a conversation internally, and then of course with you guys and with James about, you know, going to maybe that model in October. We started doing that, I think, in August, and it's actually been working really well. So we didn't, we decided not to do it for this meeting, but, you know, looking ahead, we can definitely look at that option, and it's been working pretty well with council. So if you guys are interested in that, you know, that would be great, because we end up having, even if it's not everyone, you know, maybe, you know, five or six of you here, or however, however we want to do it, and spacing and that sort of thing. So it's been working well with council, so we can look at that if that interests y'all.
Anybody else? Anything else, Brantley?
Just want to add, I think Katie sent it out today, and she's done a terrific job getting this done, the plan first, redesignation of the city. Yeah, it's a really good deal for the city of Woodstock. So.
Yes.
Good job, Katie.
Good job.
Yay. Thanks. Good job, everybody else, too. It's all what we all decide to do. That's why we win awards all the time, because we are all awesome collectively at once.
Well, really proud of it, and, you know, glad, glad to be re-designated again by DCA for sure, and we definitely want to stay on the right track. I would just add that we've had quite a few cases filed the last couple of cycles. Obviously, we're not taking any more than four cases per cycle, so, you know, October, November look to be pretty robust meetings. We also have a schedule coming out soon for the new calendar. Believe it or not, it's that time of year again, hard to believe. So we'll have that new schedule to you soon. And the amendment that we brought to you that Paris worked on back in August is having the second reading on September 14th, so that, so it'll be in effect. And that's going to change some of our procedures with regard to the expiration or into some of the entitlements to get approved, and the way that that's done with scheduling and, and the default of 18 months for zonings and variances and 12 months for conditional use permits. So we're going to be including that in our process and our recommendations moving forward so that you're aware of that. And if there's a difference or change that needs to be made with a case with that, we'll point that out, keep you up to speed on that. But the next meeting's October 1st, and it'll be here fast. So if you have any questions in the meantime for us, you know, call, come by, whatever, email us, and we appreciate your service as always.
Thank you. That said, we shall end the meeting.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. See you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.